The meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of the flag and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is recognitions and acknowledgements. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. President. So tonight, I have the honor of, excuse me, of bringing forward, let me make sure, oops. Yes, I'll make sure I'm doing the right thing. Bringing forward our student rep for the fall semester of 2023, Mr. Timothy Hoagland. Timothy Hoagland has been a Windsor student his entire school career, starting Oliver Ellsworth, then moving over to J F K. Sage Park Middle School and is now a proud Windsor Warrior at Windsor High School. Although he only needs 25 credits to graduate, Timothy had already accumulated 27.7 credits by the end of his junior year. Timothy also has well over 40 hours of community service, earned mostly through his work in adaptive sports, helping those with special needs learn how to ski and snowboard over the last four years. Timothy's outstanding character is best summarized by Ms. Juliana Rivera, his former chemistry teacher. She states, "Tim is an exceptional student, but most importantly, he has a kind, understanding, and patient nature. He is a role model to his classmates as he works hard to deeply and thoroughly understand concepts. He never settles for the basics. On the contrary, he researches and asks questions to deepen his knowledge. Tim is always willing to help others when they need him and gracefully offers his skills to the benefit of his classroom community. Timothy is an accomplished musician, having played violin from second through eighth grade and has been playing saxophone since fourth grade. A valued member of our W H S Jazz Ensemble, as well as drum major for the W H S Marching Band. Timothy has impressed upon his music teacher, Mr. Brandon Monroe, who stated, "Timothy Hoagland is the type of student you want representing your program, team, and your district. His attention to detail and determination alone make him stand out amongst his peers. Tim welcomes challenges and constantly adapts to the environment around him, making him a valuable asset to any organization." Timothy is also the captain of the Windsor High School golf team and has been playing golf for Windsor High since his freshman year. He's also taken many different electives throughout his high school career in order to become a well-rounded student and a proud member of the National Honor Society. Through his diverse course of studies, Timothy has found interest in mechanical or robotic engineering as he likes to work hands-on to solve problems and has since been nominated for the Junior Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute Book Award for Engineering. Timothy aims to attend either the University of Connecticut or Worcester Polytechnic Institute to continue his studies in engineering. We are proud to present Timothy Hoagland as one of the student representatives for the Windsor Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year, so he's our fall rep. Welcome, Tim.
What a not ending move over here.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Congratulations are welcome. Want a picture?
Take a photo.
I'm sure you guys can be seen.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Be careful.
Next, we have our introduction of Windsor's Educator of the Year. Not sure who is going to be presenting that.
I'm sorry, I had changed the last one, so Ms. Bachelder will be doing that? Thank you.
Thank you. I would first like to call up Mr. Jay Mahaco, Principal of Paquonic Elementary School, to introduce our Teacher Educator of the Year, Kathleen Stoll.
Yeah, let me find it.
How will you, um, this is, this is.
He's right there.
Oh, you see him? Oh. Yeah.
I think he was open.
Fargo, you're going to read, um, Ms. Stoll?
Yes, of course.
He's making entrance, great entrance.
Like a professional wrestler.
So I just read the first paragraph here. All right. Kathleen Stoll has been named the 2023-2024 Educator of the Year by Windsor Public Schools. She began her teaching career in the district in 19, uh-huh, and has been a first-grade teacher at Oliver Ellsworth and later at Paquonic School, 2014 to present. In addition to her teaching roles, she has worked as a summer school teacher for 15 years and a private tutor for students in grades K through 12 since 2010. Stoll holds a Bachelor of Science degree in education from Keene State College and a Master's of Science in Reading and Language Arts at Central Connecticut State University. She has been actively involved in various school-based teams, including the Equity Team, Data Building Team, and as a professional learning community leader. She has also served as a science team member, providing support to fellow teachers at Oliver Ellsworth. Outside the classroom, she has contributed to the Windsor community through her involvement with Alex's Lemonade Stand and as a religious education teacher for nine years. Stoll's impact extends beyond the classroom as she's provided private tutoring and mentoring to students of all ages, including adults. When asked about the impact this has had on students at Windsor Public Schools, Kathleen responded, "To know that I made a difference in helping not only elementary students, but high school students and still struggling, as well as adults, remains one of my greatest honors in my career." She emphasizes the importance of each child reaching their full potential and building trusting relationships with both students and their families. Kathleen recently stated, "As an educator, it's my strong belief and priority that each child reaches their full potential. I strive to reach each and every child, as well as their family, capitalizing on strengths, personalities, their individual learning styles, as well as their social and emotional well-being. My students know that I believe in them and the power of yet. My motto has always been, 'We are a team,' myself, my students, and their family. All three units must work together to foster a love of lifelong learning, as well as helping each child reach their full potential as a well-rounded individual." The Windsor Public Schools Educator of the Year Program recognized and honors exceptional teaching. Stoll will represent Windsor Public Schools in the State of Connecticut Teacher of the Year Program. The announcement of Educator of the Year will be made by the Windsor Board of Education at this meeting.
Congratulations, it's good to see you again.
Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Next, we have introduction of Windsor's Paraeducator of the Year, Sandra Bailey. Dr. Hill?
Thank you. I'm going to call Principal Parker forward to introduce Ms. Bailey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for 10 years, Ms. Sandra Bailey has been a valuable asset to our department, primarily providing intensive support to students with academic and social-emotional needs. She is humble, spiritual, honest, dependable, and incredibly hardworking. Ms. Bailey is very proud and mindful of her opportunity to be a representation for all students to achieve, which was evident in her presentation at one of our schools' cultural celebrations. But her work and presence transcends our school community. Ms. Bailey established a nonprofit scholarship and school resource program that she sends all the proceeds directly to her home country of Jamaica. Derived from a modest yearly fundraiser, accepting bottles for recycling, she has transformed it into something so much more to now where also receiving donations for student scholarships and essentials for living. Those are little things to some of us. Ms. Bailey is known for selfless, for being selfless, patient, and prideful in her work with students, families, and teachers, but although soft-spoken at times, she seems to know when to give the building a spark of energy and compassion. Often, she reflects on her observations of others and her own experiences and shares them. Ms. Bailey reminds students and staff alike that when we pause and acknowledge the little things, we can make the world a better place. One colleague states, "Ms. Bailey is one of the most caring individuals I have ever met. She loves our kids and wants them to be successful, to have honor, and to be prepared for success." Another colleague states, "Ms. Bailey is a role model for students and staff alike, the consummate professional and champion for some of our hardest-to-reach students. Family, spirituality, kids, and colleagues are the reasons mentioned above and so many more that I present to you. This year's Windsor Public Schools Para-Professional of the Year, Ms. Sandra Bailey."
Shake hands, right here. Miss, shake hands for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Doug, for being here.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Come on, come on, come on.
You have a line of sight in there.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is introduction of the new administrators, and Dr. Hill and Ms. Bachelder.
All right, thank you so much. I'd first like to introduce, I'll just give a little blurb for each one and then you guys can stand up. First, our acting principal at John F. Kennedy School, Mr. Dana Gagne. Dana, as I'm pretty sure everyone knows, has been educator in Windsor Public Schools for the past 23 years. Mr. Gagne started in Windsor in 1999 as a paraeducator prior to becoming a math teacher in 2004. Along with being an educator for Windsor Public Schools, Mr. Gagne is also a resident and a parent. Welcome, well, not welcome. Congratulations, Mr. Gagne. I would now like to welcome Ms. Karen Lawson as our new elementary special ed supervisor for grades pre-K through grade two for Windsor Public Schools. Ms. Lawson comes to us most recently from Middletown, where she was the supervisor of Social Emotional Learning, People's Services, and Special Ed. Ms. Lawson has been an educator for over 17 years and has extensive and diverse experience working with youth in a variety of educational settings. This is actually Ms. Lawson's second stint, and as she says, her final for Windsor Public School. She was here back in 2014 as a social, excuse me, school social worker. Welcome, Ms. Lawson. I'd like to now say congratulations and welcome to Mrs., actually, excuse me, Dr. M. J. Martinez, Martinez, as our Arts and Humanities Supervisor at Windsor High School. Dr. Martinez has been an educator for over 12 years. She started her career in Berlin Public Schools and most recently from Farmington Public Schools, while she held the position of Journalism and English Teacher at Farmington High. Within her tenure in Farmington, Dr. Martinez developed and refined both the Journalism and American Studies Program. In addition to being a journalism and English teacher, Dr. Martinez has held other roles such as founder of the Latinx Culture Club, P B I S Chair, Chair Committee Chair, Newspaper Advisor, National Honor Society Advisor, as well as Student Council Advisor. Welcome, Dr. Martinez. Last but not least, I'm sure many of you already know, Mr. Matthew Spector as our new Assistant Principal of Clover Street. Mr. Spector is a resident Windsor as well as a Windsor volunteer firefighter. Mr. Spector has been a special ed teacher and case manager for the past 11 years at Simsberry High. During his tenure, Mr. Spector managed students from grades nine through 12 across all academic content areas and was always a member of his high school leadership team. Welcome and congratulations, Mr. Spector.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is audience to visitor, and Ms. Daly, let you do your thing.
Good evening, this is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be prompted with, "You are now unmuted." For clear communication, we ask that you do not place your call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you, and as we usually do, for folks that are speaking in the room, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark of speaking, Vice President Lockhart will raise up a red card, and then at the three-minute mark, he'll raise it and hold it, and please, at that point, try to finish up your remarks. For those who are calling in, we may have to, you won't be, if you're not able to see the red card, Mr. Lockhart will have to interrupt you to let you know time to wind up at the three-minute mark. I'd like to start this evening by taking those who are here in the boardrooms.
We're starting at 7:22.
Is this on? Is it on? Okay. My name is Sally Grossman, 34 Remington Road. I told my son that I'd be coming here tonight and the reason why, and he decided he wanted to say something, and then when I read what he wrote, I decided I can't possibly say it any better than him. So, here we go.
My name is Parker Grossman Shoner. I'm a fifth grader at Clover Street Elementary School. I'm speaking tonight because I want to make sure LGBTQ students are treated the same way as any other student. I'm 10 years old and in fifth grade, and I have known what being lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, and queer is since I was at least in third grade. It is not something that is hard or weird to understand. I have friends in middle school who get picked on for being gay. What I don't understand is why middle school kids are old enough to be bullied because they are members of the LGBTQ community but not old enough to learn about it so they can prepare for life. My favorite band is Imagine Dragons. I heard a quote from the lead singer, Dan Reynolds, that I want to share. "No child is born with hatred. No child is born with racism. No child is born bigoted. Kids aren't born hatin' people for what they look like or who they love. We have to be told who to hate, so please don't tell anyone it's okay to hate my friends who are gay. Thank you, have a good day."
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Waterhouse. I reside at Five Carey Court here in Windsor. I'm also the president and co-founder of Voices Against Lyme Disease. Good evening, Board of Education, David President and Leonard Vice President, and all board members. As some of you know, Voices Against Lyme Disease has given the opportunity over the years to actually provide educational and awareness programs to children here in Windsor in the classrooms and will continue to do so as long as we are able to. In too many instances, we have found our students are well aware of family members or friends, or even themselves, that have Lyme disease and what they're dealing with. Through the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program, we were able to purchase the license to show an important, true documentary called "The Monster Inside Me," the story of a woman's battle for her life and her hope for the future. This kind of battle is being fought by many adults, by many children, and families. We do not want our children and families to suffer or fight alone. We, Voices Against Lyme Disease, would like to invite the Board of Education to this free documentary that we are having at the Windsor Public Library on Saturday, October 14th, at 1:00 P. M. Please join us. We would appreciate it very much, and I have invitations for you as well.
Thank you very much. While she's doing that, I'll let the next person who'd like to address the board and just wait till she finishes passing these out. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Did you start my timer ready? My name is Cap, I live at 166 West Street. I'm here to speak tonight in regards to the agenda item concerning the discussion on the part of the Windsor Education Foundation grant for March, which was tabled for the June 20th meeting. This item was originally placed on the agenda at the request of Mr. Paul Panos with the support of board members Ms. Jill Cantor and Mr. Jeremy Halick. As an educator for the last 12 years, I know that the Board of Ed and Administration have many things to think about and focus on and that much of tonight's meeting will be focused on mold, student and staff health, and the best ways to ensure safety moving forward. I almost chose to not speak tonight because I hoped that the board's need to focus on those important and pressing matters would remind the board members to trust Dr. Hill, to trust Administration, and to trust the educators who tirelessly and beautifully support all of our Windsor students. Truthfully, I hope that this agenda item would be dropped, however, it has not been. I feel as though my feelings on this agenda item were expressed clearly at the June board meeting, so instead, tonight, I'm going to speak on behalf of the response to my words at that meeting. After I spoke, Mr. Panos stated, and I quote, "I find it very disappointing that we have several citizens who simply cannot hear an opinion which they disagree with and engage in rather vicious accusations based upon nothing in order to suppress public discussion. I think that's a terrible thing. It helps everyone to have an honest and open discussion on these matters. I hope we will have a little bit more open-mindedness on the part of those who seem to always want to shut down debate," end quote. I want to spend my last couple minutes speaking truth into the shadows of what it means for marginalized people or underrepresented groups when a discussion point is brought up or a one-sided debate occurs, or when a question is asked or a statement is made in a public forum like a Board of Ed meeting, and that the discussion, question, debate, or statement is made by a person in a position of power. When marginalized peoples are spoken about and are not at the table to offer perspective or insight, it is an act of violence on that community. Queer youth, and specifically queer youth of color, are some of the most marginalized people in existence, so my response to the statements made at me in June is simply this. Instead of using your position of power to state opinions or host one-sided debates about marginalized groups or asking questions of the educators who are doing this work and the youth they are supporting, I want you to ask yourself these questions instead. Why is this the first and only WEF grant of a school-approved program that has been put up for discussion at a board meeting in 20 years? What is your understanding of the power and privilege that you hold in your role as a Board of Education member? And what does it mean when a point is brought up for discussion for the groups who do not hold the same power and privilege as you? Who is representing the LGBTQI+ community on this board? Who is elevating the voices of this marginalized group? Who, what do you, what do I actually know about the communities and individuals who are doing this work, specifically at Windsor High School in Sage Park? When you are sitting in a position of power and have been for multiple decades and you regularly benefit from white privilege or male privilege, or cis-straight privilege, or any privilege, and your opinions are not questioned regularly, I understand, it does feel like a vicious accusation when you are questioned or your microaggressive actions are called out.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Essex, and my address is 95 Lighthouse Hill Road. I am here in regards to Agenda Item 7G, which pertains to the Windsor Education Foundation grant awarded to the High School Gender and Sexuality Alliance for their grant, the LGBTQ+ Education and Awareness Project. As a citizen of Windsor and a parent of two Windsor Public School students, I have to wonder the reason this grant award continues to be questioned and discussed. The Windsor Education Foundation is an independent, 401(c)(3) nonprofit organization with a mission to support Windsor students. Why is grant funding to a school club being debated? In the March board meeting where these funds were awarded, Mr. Panos and Ms. Cantor, you questioned whether the grant funds should be redirected or flat-out refused. You then both requested this agenda item for the June meeting, along with Mr. Halick, with the quote from the grant application. With support from their teacher, students in the GSA will facilitate workshops with middle school students to help build connections before high school. What is the discussion here? Is it that high school students would be engaging with middle school students? Or is it that LGBTQ+ high school students and allies would be engaging with middle school students? Either way, why? What does it matter? The Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ youth mental health shows that 45% - 45% - of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. However, LGBT youth who... LGBTQ youth who found their school to be LGBTQ-affirming reported much lower rates of attempting suicide. Sage Park does not have a GSA group. But if those young students can feel acceptance from high school students and know that they will have that acceptance when they get to high school, why deny them that? Mr. Panos, you stated in the March meeting that this is a topic that should be discussed at home. What about those students who don't feel that home is a safe place for them? According to that Trevor Project survey, fewer than 1 in 3 transgender and non-binary youth found their home to be gender-affirming. They don't find home to be a safe place to have these discussions. The GSA group is that safe place for these students. Those of you in front of us were elected to support the education in Windsor. Part of that is supporting Windsor's students, all of them. Please, set aside your homophobic feelings and rhetoric and do what you were elected to do. Even if you don't support it personally, this Board of Education needs to support the GSA and their desire to be a support system for their fellow LGBTQ+ students and allies. Thank you.
George Slate, 74 Ethan Drive. It's been a long time since I've spoken to the Board of Ed. I was going to speak today about inviting students to join me in a journey to figure out in 10 years what we would celebrate for Windsor's 400th anniversary: the annihilation of the natives, or, as the town seal says, "the first English settlement in Connecticut." But I've got something more pressing that you're facing, so I'll get on to that. But the comment on the first thing: oppression of the minorities or others has been going on for hundreds of years. And I guess it's resurrecting itself in the last three months in this town. Oliver Ellsworth. One of my tax clients has used a company's product, a company's out of Lastonberry product that you spray in buildings or homes. Kills mold. After waiting 48 hours, you can occupy it. It's that simple. Nothing more about it. So, I sent you guys an email about that. You have that in front of you. Next to me is Laura Champagne from that company. If any parent, teacher, student, union official, anyone else wants to talk to her about the product and the company. They've been trying to tell me all the... I first called them about 4 o'clock this afternoon. They tried to tell me the science of this green product. I just don't care if it works, if it's that simple, and it could be done and presumably much cheaper than anything else I've been hearing about. And for all the comments I've ever made to the council, they've always been financially based. That's what this one's about. Solve your problem. Get it over with. Quick. Green sounds good, but I don't really care about green. Just want it done and get it over with so we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Jacobson, and I live at 50 Lighthouse Hill Road. I'd like to comment tonight on Agenda Item 7G pertaining to the WEF grant awarded to the Windsor High School Gay Straight Alliance. There seems to be concern regarding the appropriateness of the high school GSA inviting the middle school GSA to attend a GSA conference. And there's several points of contention on this. First of all, Sage Park Middle School doesn't currently have an active GSA. They didn't have one last year either. No staff has come forward to help run it, even though there is a need. Part of the perceived problem here does not currently exist. The appropriateness being questioned is what exactly? Are board members trying to suggest that this is school-sanctioned grooming? What proof do you have that this actually happens? And if you have none, then why oppose it? Given the staggering amount of attacks on LGBTQ rights and LGBTQ communities as a whole over the last few years, and specifically GSA clubs and schools across the country, it seems clear that the aim of questioning the appropriateness of the GSA is to take an already marginalized group of students and single them out further. This high school GSA group already exists, has existed for close to 20 years in our schools, and is considered allowable and appropriate by the Federal Board of Education. Suddenly find fault with the GSA receiving outside funds that the Board of Ed does not need to approve smacks of attempting to score political points. I would like to believe that as a voting body titled the Board of Education, board members would research and educate themselves on something if they do not understand it. It seems I'm destined to be disappointed in this manner as a board and as individuals who vote on what my children learn and what my children have access to or don't have access to. I think it speaks volumes when certain members have no interest in learning something new. At the June Board of Ed meeting, Mr. Panos stated he hoped for more open-mindedness, and I'm quoting the minutes from that meeting on this issue, as if somehow members of the community coming out in support of the GSA made us the closed-minded ones. I will state loudly and passionately, my gay child, indeed, any of my children, or any child in this district, for that matter, should not be used as some sort of dog whistle to score political points with your constituents. Please do not pretend that this is in the interest of protecting students. No one wants to indoctrinate the homophobic teens or their homophobic parents. No one is forced to join a club. These students just want to build a community with people they know won't hurt them, and that for some of those students, sadly, the safest place will not be their homes for that. My child is allowed to exist without prejudice. All children should be allowed to exist without prejudice, and the GSA helps serve that need. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alexandria Torres, an educator at Windsor High. And I have a speech from Gina Lys Negron, who is also...
Could you give your address?
Oh.
Sorry.
78 Robin Road, Windsor, Connecticut.
Thank you.
And I'm here on behalf of Gina Lys Negron for the GSA. I'm going to play her speech, and if not, I'll read it after.
Good evening. My name is Gina Lys Negron, a senior at Windsor High School. Firstly, I would like to say that the LGBT community has been around since the beginning of time. We aren't new. We aren't a disease. This isn't a game called Tag, where I tag you and you're it. I would like to clarify that GSA is a safe space for Windsor High students who don't have that support and comfort at home. You don't have to like us or support us. All we ask is that you show us some respect. I would like to point out that the world is changing every day. The GSA has given students the courage to open up together, but also with their own friends and family members. They have also given the students the tools to tell their parents that they prefer other sexualities or prefer to use another gender and/or pronouns. The GSA is not only a safe space for students, but it also brings people together for so many reasons. We feel free to talk about anything, being our complete selves, and knowing that people won't be disgusted or disappointed with us. Don't be afraid of us. We aren't going to take over the world. We just want to live our lives like normal humans, because that's what we are: normal humans. We have feelings just like you. We have a beating heart just like you. Our feelings matter just like how your feelings matter. My last point of clarification: the GSA does not talk about sex. We talk about developing relationships, building a better community, and how we can make Windsor High School a better place. All we want to do is help people in need and make sure students have the support they need to succeed. We are a home to students that might not have the necessary love and support from people at home. This is why GSA was created: to make people feel supported and not judged for who they are. We are here to stay, with or without support, because the GSA is a place where everyone is welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Do I have to give my address?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Leigh, 27 Donovan Lane. This was run by me and a friend who can't be here, was on Zoom. Anyways, so my name is Leigh. I'm a current student at Windsor High School and a member of the GSA. I was told that the Board of Education's purpose was to make decisions with the health and well-being of every student in mind. Today, I bring the statement into question. The Gender and Sexuality Alliance has a goal of bringing together LGBTQ+ students and allies to create a community within that is supposed to be a safe environment. The statistics were already stated, but I'm going to state it again because it's not seeming to click. The Trevor Project survey from 2022 found that nearly half of LGBTQ youth have seriously considered suicide. That's 1.8 million kids who thought about ending their lives. The opposition to the summit is taking away students' access to support and resources. The claim that the summit will contribute to indoctrinating kids into the queer community robs kids of their autonomy. It reiterates the rhetoric that has been used for centuries to limit the rights of queer people and other marginalized groups. I find it both humorous and horrifying that after so many years of progress, we've come right back to disguising bigotry as concern for the youth, actively barring kids from resources that could save their lives due to hysteria of grooming or indoctrination. Pushing personal biases onto kids is not only hypocritical, it shows a lack of empathy from members of the board and is dehumanizing. The complete disregard for the lives of queer students worries me extremely. The GSA has invited members of the board to attend our meetings each Monday. And instead of attending, they found it better to make assumptions based on prejudice. There needs to be conversations. Without a conversation, there will be no progress between the relationships of students and educators. And you cannot speak for the students when you are absent for their cause. The summit will happen because we have the right to make it happen and because we care about the mental health of our community.
Someone else who would like to address the board? And for the board, we're at the 24-minute mark. So if we go past 30 minutes, we need to make a motion to extend.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Hines. I live at 49 Farmstead Lane. Windsor Education Foundation is an independent nonprofit organization created to provide grants to teachers to pay for equipment, programs, and initiatives which are consistent with the Windsor Public School curriculum and/or policy, and which are intended to enhance the educational experience beyond the usual classroom curriculum. I say all that to say, acceptable activities support and promote thinking beyond the classroom, or it also encourages the inclusion of all students. Agenda Item 7G is a direct attack on students for which this grant will support. The GSA is not a newly-founded group at the high school. It is a program consistent with the Windsor Public School curriculum and/or policy. So I find it curious that support for this group is being questioned. Support, again, as I mentioned earlier, is from an independent nonprofit organization that does not require the consensus of the Board of Education. All students, regardless of their identity, deserve the right to feel and actually be supported. What better way to feel supported than to create workshops designed specifically for that reason? The fact that this grant is being questioned sets back progression of inclusion and acceptance for students who are members of the LGBTQ+ community. Why in 2023 are we still ostracizing groups of people? Why are we still advocating for hate due to identity? How can we win when bigotry and prejudice is so persistent in our community? This grant, like many others, provided by the WEF, Windsor Education Foundation, supports the mental well-being of our students. So why is it that this particular grant is being called out and not the others? This discriminatory behavior must cease. And you must do your responsibility of supporting and protecting the children of Windsor, all children, even those of a different belief than your own. In a community as diverse as this, these kinds of complaints shouldn't be entertained in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Leah Negron. I'm a Spanish teacher at Windsor High School, 382 Ridgewood Road.
Can you give your address?
382 Ridgewood Road, West Hartford. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Andrea Chudzek. I will be reading a message on her part. My name is Andrea Chudzek, and I am a proud English teacher and advisor for multiple social justice clubs at Windsor High School. I am inspired by the work of the WHS Gender and Sexuality Alliance because they have identified the needs of Windsor and broader Connecticut communities. They have also planned a thorough, thoughtful, powerful way to address them. That takes great leadership, organization, and critical thinking, all of which we claim to value as a district. The LGBTQIA+ youth have expressed a need for safe, supportive spaces to connect and celebrate their identities, identify ways in which discrimination is perpetuated, both in and out of school, and come up with solutions so that the future students don't feel alone, harassed, different, or in danger. These are current realities, and school districts and their boards should celebrate young people who take up their civic duty to improve their communities and make people feel safe, seen, and that they belong. Instead, members of the Windsor Board of Ed who question the legitimacy of this multi-school summit confront our entire community with a disturbing lack of awareness and empathy. And frankly, they are discriminating against our LGBTQIA+ youth, the very discrimination that makes summits like this necessary. Discriminating behaviors by our board include narrowing the experiences of our LGBTQIA plus youth to sex. Our heterosexual and cisgender students are never kept from gathering out of fear that they will discuss sex, and the notion that this is one of their motivations for convening promotes harmful stereotypes about the LGBTQIA plus community that I recommend you research. It is also harmful to suggest that one chooses their sexual orientation or how they feel about their gender expression, since one concern brought up was that students attending the event will be influenced to become LGBTQIA plus. First of all, why would that be bad? Secondly, that concern reveals an enormous lack of understanding about gender and sexuality. I hope the board members will take time to educate themselves about science and about issues actually facing the LGBTQIA plus community, and I hope that those who have questioned this event understand that their acts are harmful and unnecessarily deepen the need to support our students. The entire board should celebrate the creation of spaces where all Windsor students can be their amazing selves without being judged. If the people who were elected to support our students cannot get behind the idea, then why do we want to serve on the board? I am so very proud of our GSA, but I wish they could have stayed home tonight. Thank you.
Mr. President, um, point of order, um, we started the audience divisors at seven twenty-two as announced in front of the whole group. Per our bylaws, it's a thirty-minute time limit. If there's gonna be more speakers entertained, it needs to be voted on by this board and into two-third majority vote, since it's a bylaw.
Is there a second?
So wait a minute, so, so I move, I move to extend, um, audience divisors by another thirty minutes.
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Extentions? Motion carries nine zero zero. The time is now seven fifty-two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Forty-one Vine Street. My name is Ace Ricker. I use he/him pronouns. I've been a public advocate and educator for the last twenty years. I'm an openly multiracial trans man. I specifically, unfortunately, am here to advocate for these young individuals who have spoken and those who are fearful to speak because of some hate that has been going on. I navigate classrooms throughout New England consistently every single year, and I continue to see what is the rhetoric of stopping support. And with seven G, right now, I grew up in Shell, Connecticut, a predominantly white community. And growing up within that community, I never saw myself as a trans man, as a person of color. So hearing questions when growing up like, what do you wanna be when you grow up? In the back of my mind, I just wanted to exist. I wanted to see my future. I wanted to see myself in spaces that there was no discussion happening. And that's what you are denying, these young kids, if you don't allow this summit and don't continue these conversations. This will stop growth. This will stop inclusion. This will stop allowing these young kids to express themselves and know that they are valued walking through this school, valued walking into their careers as adults, valued as people, that they unfortunately had to come here to say like, am I worth it to you as students in this room? Being seen is very hard sometimes, and as an adult, as a trans multiracial adult, I specifically made a point to become a public speaker because when I was young, I didn't see myself anywhere. The only places I saw myself was in slavery or being attacked on the news by hatred. And I stand here as an adult to support these young kids that may not have that support at home, that can't have these conversations with their parents. Like mine, I was disowned at the age of eighteen. I was homeless for a period of time because my parents ran on fear and ignorance that was being pushed out. And I will stand here with these young kids today to make sure that they will never be pushed out, that they will always be seen, whether they are in this room or out there looking for a job, whether career. Statistics done with the Trevor Project? LGBTQ plus youth, who report having at least one, one accepting adult, were forty percent less likely to reduce the chance of suicide attempt in this past year by forty percent. I specifically wanna make sure that they know that they're supported, because I've navigated being part of this statistic. And I will make sure to stand here and not only vocalize as being part of the queer community, being a trans man, but I will uplift and empower them, and I hope you do as well. Thank you.
Someone else who'd like to address the board in the boardroom?
Uh, James Madison, atheist in Morris Circle. Um, my standard three disclaimers, I am an atheist, I'm not here to lecture anyone on morality. Um, I fully support the right of consenting adults to do whatever they want with other consenting adults at all times, including love, sex, and marriage. And I've been a, a, a strong vocal supporter of gay marriage, uh, since the nineteen nineties, before Obama, before Hillary, and before it was cool. Um, then my concern is, is a very, a small subcomponent of the T in LGBTQ. And my concern is when I look at someone like Leah Thomas, who was a five-hundredth-ranked male swimmer and then declared himself a woman and crushes all the other girls. That's just unfair to girls. Okay, I look at the California prison system where they allowed males to declare themselves female, put them in with female inmates, and they had to hand out condoms to prevent pregnancy. That was a cell-level assignment. It wasn't a building or a wing. It was cell by cell. They put biological males in with biological females in the prison system. Um, I look at the case of Chloe Cole. At the age of twelve, she transitioned. At the age of fifteen, she had her breasts surgically removed. At the age of seventeen, she detransitioned. She now identifies as a woman, she is a biological woman, and she has no breasts. I also look at the fact that when you socially transition kids, they're more likely to go on puberty blockers. If you put them on puberty blockers, they're more likely to go on hormone therapy. If you put them on hormone therapy, they're more likely to undergo surgery. That's a fact. So there is the ability to influence people in a certain direction. Also, if you do undergo that kind of extensive intervention, you're taking out about a million dollars of lifetime medical intervention. You're gonna be fighting your biology for a long time. If that's your choice, I support it a hundred percent. But you gotta educate people to know what they're going into. So I actually would like to see the education of LGBTQ questions go on in society, and I think right now our society is, is, has really embraced the compassionate aspect of this, but not looked at the practical aspects. And I think in a, in five, ten years, it's gonna swing back. But you can't tell me that biological males can't crush girls in sports, and if this keeps going for the next ten years, there will be no girl sports. There will be biological male sports and trans male sports. Right? You can't tell me it's fair to put prisoners in with, uh, uh, women, male prisoners and women. About a third of violent offenders in the prison, males, are sex offenders. A, a shockingly small percentage of women are sex offenders. Who do you think is gonna get themselves into the female prisons? And I'm not blaming people who are trans, legitimately trans, really suffering. But as a society, you know that there are a lot of heterosexual guys who are gonna know how to take advantage of this process. So all I'm saying is there are some intense s- social and, and societal issues to figure out on the question of trans. LGB solved. Love who you wanna love all the way. But when it comes to, uh, trans, I think we gotta be really careful about some of the social dynamics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Alberto Cifuentes Junior, and I'm a social worker in the state of Connecticut. Also, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance is the GSA coordinator for Q plus, statewide nonprofit that provides safe, inclusive, and affirming spaces and resources for queer youth. I'm speaking in support of the GSA Summit at Windsor High School in November. LGBTQ plus youth are bullying harassed daily in public schools in Connecticut. These youth are at much higher risk for negative health outcomes such as suicidality, addiction, and homelessness. While the largest risk reducer for these negative health outcomes is family acceptance, the second largest is community support, which is what this summit will provide to queer youth. At this conference, queer youth will be surrounded by positive role models, engaged in peer connections that will combat much of the isolation that leads to the already mentioned negative health outcomes. This conference will feature workshops and programming, buy-in for queer youth, and serve as peer mo- role modeling opportunities, especially, especially for middle school youth that are just beginning to learn about their identities and place in the world. Creating the space for older youth to provide support to younger youth will only enhance educational opportunities, provide youth at large with support and guidance they may not be getting at home or at school. I strongly recommend you support this event and help make it a success at Windsor High School. Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board? Um, seeing none, Ms. Daly, is anybody online?
Yes, there are two attendees with their hands raised. Mr. Gutchen, you are now unmuted.
Hello, I'm Adam Gutchen, nineteen McCann Street. I was the first, and as far as I know, the only L G B or T to serve on the Windsor Board of Education, or for that matter, in any elected office in Windsor. Um, I was appointed to the board event in oh four and elected, which is a lot of opportunities for people to call me a groomer, which they did. Both in whispers and in writing. I keep all the receipts. I actually have, uh, op-eds, an op-ed from a newspaper questioning whether, uh, it was appropriate for me to be in a, a position of authority over education. Uh, so I'm used to that kind of rhetoric. Um, but I'm also used to our community not being well-represented among Windsor's decision-makers. So I have a request for the board tonight. Uh, just get this over with, and I just particularly ask our, my, uh, the Democrats, you don't all need to give rousing ten-minute speeches, because what LGBT kids need uh, is to not have our human dignity debated by a panel of straight cis people. Um, I take as an article of faith that this attempt at rousing gay panic and trans panic in Windsor is not going to work, because I believe in all my heart, or with all my heart, that Windsor is a promise. You belong here. And I have faith that the board will affirm that tonight. And I have faith that the people who are appalled at what they see and hear tonight will vote accordingly on November seventh and take the chance to repudiate, uh, this attempt at rousing gay panic and trans panic. Thank you and good night.
Daly, is there another caller?
Thank you. My name is Karen. I live at seven twenty-one Kennedy Road. You know, I came here for a completely different reason. Um, I'm an OE parent, so you can all guess why I came here for, but listening to all of you, um, it really, as a parent of small children, it concerns me because I want my children to be welcomed and loved for who they are. So to each and every single one of you that stood up here tonight and spoke, and especially those of you who spoke on behalf of students, thank you. As a parent, thank you. And I could not be prouder to have my children among students like yourself. Um, I did come to speak in regards to the whole mold situation, but again, I'm, I'm taken back by everybody's speeches and, and what's going on, and I'm truly appalled that this is even in question by, by the board. Um, we all love our children and we support our children in whoever and whatever they want to be. Um, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed in the behavior of individuals, um, it, when approached in regards to many issues, and now including this one. Um, but in regards to the OE situation, um, you know, while I understand that there are no quote-unquote standards or policies in place by higher agencies, I think that we have the duty and honor to really hold our own. Um, and I think that it's, it's time that we start doing that. Um, the situation has shown some clear cracks in communication between the district and the town, and we hope that this situation really has been eye-opening and that it provides the opportunities to fix the communication channels. Um, because this has been an ongoing issue for years now, so who, who is responsible really for, for dropping the ball on it? Um, at this point, as a parent, I don't care who, as long as we fix it. Um, we just, it just needs to be fixed. So, um, again, to those of you that spoke earlier on the previous issue, um, I support you and I thank you for, for standing up and speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Daly, anyone else?
Ms. Blue, you are now muted.
Okay, thank you. I'm calling from JFK, and I have tons of friends and family experiencing all of the changes that are, that should be allowed without a debate, without, um, arguing, without making other children feel unwelcome, unloved, unprotected, not cared for. Can you hear me?
Yes, we need you to state your name and address.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry. It's Dale Blue. Yeah, it's Dale Blue, three eight, um, and I work at JFK Alum Ridge School. Did you want my address as well? He wants the address?
Please, yes, please.
Okay, P O Box ten fourteen Windsor, Connecticut, zero six zero nine five.
Do you have, do you have like a residential address, maybe?
Okay, so I can go now?
Do you have a residential address?
Oh, it was thirty-one Allen Street, but no, not right now. It's, um, it's in, um, Hartford.
Go ahead.
Just, just being an advocate for everyone going through, um, changes and trying to feel like belong, to belong in a group of kids. I work with them every day, and it's a trying situation for all of them. I treat them all as equal, um, and I just feel that when people open up, open up their eyes and their minds and they start listening to other people who are different, and different can be a, a good thing, a bad thing. It could just be all of us having a learning, learning life skills that we all need to learn, because who are we to judge? We are God's children. We love all, and I love the children from Windsor. And I'm a definite supporter and an activist for any of them, or advocate for anybody who needs, um, any support or talking to. I am available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is one comment in the Q and A feature.
Is there a name and address?
There is. Uh, Lucy Goins, Nine Sage Park Road. I'm glad that there is an opportunity for our town's middle schoolers to have a group that is welcoming and supportive. All of us benefit from supportive groups, but particularly our community's youth, in particular those who are marginalized and those and those who are marginalized. I am bothered that there is an agenda item to discuss blocking this group to support our community's children.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, online?
Yes, there is another attendee for speaking. Gage Jacobson, you are now unmuted.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gage Jacobson, and I live at fifty Lighthouse Hill Road. I am somebody from Sage Park Middle School. The gay street alliance, its, its existence is helpful to me because it lets me know who is safe and who I can trust at, at all times. There are lots of homophobic students at my school and gay slurs are commonly used. People, people my age through high school who identify as LGBTQ make me feel safer. It helps me, it helps my mind find new people I can actually trust that I know aren't just jerks. And that means a lot to me. My mom already decided to come up and speak and sort of my friend Parker. So I'm thankful for that. Thank you. And James Madison? I have a bunch of trans friends. So you really wanna do that type of crap? Come on. Thank you.
We can allow that. We can allow that. Anyone else?
No.
Ms. Daly?
That that appears to be everyone.
Anyone else in the boardroom who'd like to address the board that didn't have an opportunity to? Alright, I think we satisfied all. Seeing and hearing none? Without objection, a closed audience to visitor?
No objection.
No objection. Well, uh, one more person then?
We were slow about that.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Dr. Carmen Maresio. I am from Puerto Rico. I just arrived to Windsor four months ago. I live in Springfield. Uh, but I am part of the
Address, please?
Okay. One thirty-seventh Carol Street in Springfield.
Thank you.
Um, I was hired by the first church in Windsor, UCC, uh, to work with the LGBTQ community. to work with the LGBTQ community, to the youth and the teenagers, Latin persons, and the person who has multiple challenge in her lives. I am here to support the margins of this world. And one of the things that I think, and our church support, is God create us, human beings, and that's it. And then the discussion of what's going on in every person has to be very careful. Because our Lord, in my religion, in my thought, in my belief, is a Lord of love, compassion, kindness, and of course, be the side of everybody that is in trouble. And we need to understand that LGBTQ persons, we are not different of the heterosexual persons. We are persons. And I finally, with this, my first sermon in the U C C was titled, "When We Make a Cake." And the resume of that sermon was, we are the ingredients. Some ingredients are going to mix very fast. And in the beginning, that is the person who stay already in Windsor. And then other people are arriving, and they're the ingredients that are fluffy ingredients for the cake. The bowl has to be the community. We, the oldest people, need to be the cookers. The youth and the teenagers need to cook in the oven of our mentality. And we need a higher power who is the rear heat. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, without objection now, we're going to close audience to visitor. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Is there any?
The financial report.
If anything needs to be pulled? Anything need to be pulled?
The financial report?
There's two items, the Human Resources Report and the Approval of the B O E regular meetings for twenty twenty-four. So I move the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items for A, Human Resources Report, and for B, Approval of the Board of Education Regular Meetings for twenty twenty-four.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing those, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions. Motion carries nine zero zero. Next item is Approval of Minutes. Ms. Taylor?
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and the August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three special meeting.
Second?
I'll second it. Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries nine zero zero. We get to hear from our student at this point. Any report that you may have, or anything you might want to say, Tim, on your, your first meeting with us?
All right, obviously, it's my first meeting, so just a little short note that I've prepared. To start off, our fall sports season has off to a strong start. We have great participation from our student athletes. We're happy to present the opportunity for students to participate in varsity and junior varsity conference sports and also club sports. Along with sports, we have a lot of extracurricular activities in clubs, allowing the students to pursue their interests. We also have workshops open, either for future education or S E L programs. Our art and music program are off to a good start, too. It's a large part of Windsor High School. Our music program has already started outreach to the community. Our band has played at town events such as the Tavern Trot, and our members of the Windsor High School Choir had the the opportunity to perform the National Anthem at the Hartford Yard Goats H B C U Night. I'm going to end this off with notes about the senior class of twenty twenty-four. We've started off with a large engagement from the class of twenty twenty-four, events such as Senior Sunrise, in which the class of twenty twenty-four gathered at the Jack O'Brien Field. We watched the sun rise together. Additionally, we've also had opportunities to fundraise for events at the end of the year, like Senior Promenade.
Thank you. Any comments or questions of our new representative? Thank you very much for being here and giving your report, and we welcome you to the board. And what we will probably tell you each week, or say to you each week, each time you're here, if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to stay, but I know this is the start of the school year and and just sounding, hearing about your background and things, I know you're taking a rigorous schedule, so it's up to you if you want to stay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. And I will keep it brief. I participated along with Mr. Lockhart and Mr. Wallison in welcoming students at Windsor High School in Sage Park. I also went to Oliver Ellsworth. I think others went to other schools as well. I spoke at the convocation. It was a great opportunity for staff to get back together again, to meet new, new folks, and then hear some pretty inspiring remarks from our Educator of the Year and Para-educator of the Year. And I was going to say something about the mold issue, but it's on the agenda already, so that is my report. Any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart? If there are no questions or comments, I would ask that the board, after your report that we entertain Item seven G, so I make that in the form of a motion that we take up Agenda Item seven G after seven A, and then after which we proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart and seconded by Ms. Taylor to go to seven G at this time.
Right now?
Yeah. Any, any discussion?
Here's the motion I'm going to make, okay? No, that's fine.
Call a question? All those in favor of moving seven G to the next item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries nine zero zero. We are at Item seven G. Discussion on the Part of the Windsor Education Foundation Grant from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, which states with support from their teacher, students, and the G S A will facilitate workshops with middle school students to help build connections before high school. Mr. Panos, you were the one who recommended, so if you'd like to start off this?
Right, the grant, the grant mentions this, the connection that you're talking about between the G S A and the high school with the middle school students. Now, I understand that the grant, though, the money was for a summit, a high school summit. So it was a bit confusing, say, because it sounded like it said connections will also, the G S A will also host a multi-school LGBTQ summit. So in the context of this, it sounded like you were talking about having an LGBTQ summit for the schools of Windsor. So, you know, so this, now, first of all, you know, the issue is you're, you're mixing on a sensitive subject. You're mixing high schoolers who are sixteen and seventeen years old with middle schoolers who can be eleven years old. That's, and I consider that inappropriate. I don't care what the, the sexual orientation is. So, and then when it, when it went on to say that the G S A will also host a multi-school LGBTQ, I thought, well, they must be talking about the elementary, too, which I would consider on this particular topic, because this is strictly something up to the adults, the, the parents. This is certainly not something that the board, that should occur under the board's auspices, even if it's a grant for something else. It, the reason why we're here is because it is under the auspices of the Board of Education. So even though it's not a program, but it still happens here. So, well, Ms. Hattie, send me the G S A summit. Did you, you must have seen this, no? I don't know, this is, it discussed the, the grant, the grant for twenty percent. And in this summit, it talks about the G S A submitted a proposal to the Windsor Education Fund to support some of the LGBTQ plus education and awareness programs. And, you know, it aligns with the Windsor Public Schools' core value of character development. And the LGBTQ Education and Awareness Project was proposed by students in the G S A Windsor High School. So it talked about bringing together multi-school LGBTQ summit. The summit will be in partnership with Q Plus, nonprofit organization that empowers queer youth. And workshops will be student-led and adult-led. Okay, that's fine, see, in the pit.
Mr. Panos, I could just interject. The only discussion here, I know there is the summit, which we've been told is only high school students. The only item here for discussion has to do with the middle school and the high school.
That's correct. And therefore, what the grant has written does not reflect where the money is going. That's the point of this. If you, all of this
But I believe the money is only going to the summit. That's what we were told previously.
Well, previous today. I didn't know that when this, when this came out. In any case, you know, my, my motion would be that this, that this grant does not, is not something, did not be used to facilitate workshops by the high school to form connections with middle school students. That's, that's the essence of what I'm talking about. And so this, you know, was confusing as it was written. So, as, because it says, you know, with support from the teacher, but it goes on to talk about something that is, has nothing to do with the money that is offered in the grant. So I'm thinking, if, you know, I'm simply pointing out here, there's, there's two things. One, one, this is written in a confusing manner. It, it actually leads one to believe that the G S A will, will host a multi-school of all Windsor schools. There was no
But we were previously told that that was not the case. And you were
Okay, we were not.
You were, and you were part of the meeting, so
Mr. President?
Move on.
Point of, point of information? Okay, this is, okay, my, my motion is that, that the Windsor Education Foundation Grant entitled the LGBTQ plus education and awareness project not be used to facilitate workshops by the high school G S A to form connections with middle school students.
Is there a second to that motion?
You second?
I'll second the motion. Motion made by Mr. Panos, seconded by Ms. Cantor. Mr. President?
Mr. Lockhart? Oh, he had a point of information first, and then
I was just going to ask if there, if there was a motion on the floor, because I, I did hear him make a motion, but I'd like to get to the vote.
There is a motion on the floor.
Well, we made a motion. You say I saw a motion. Okay, just speak to the motion.
So now, the maker of the motion?
He's the maker of the motion. If they speak first, and then I would like to speak after, please.
Sure. As I mentioned, that this is a sensitive topic. The organization is talking about mixing students who are sixteen, seventeen years old with students who are eleven or twelve. If people wish to do this on their own, that is their business. But it is not the place of the Board of Education to have a program of this nature. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't care whether it was heterosexual or, you know, reliance or whatever. Or, or, this is not the sort of thing that we, we're here for. And so I don't, see, and I don't see why this has any connection with the grant purpose. It has nothing to do with the grant money. And so why is this statement, the first part of this even here? If it simply said the G S A will host a multi-school LGBTQ summit among area high schools, which is the intent, then, fine, I think you can do that. But the idea that you're going to, that you could include lower, older with younger on, on this matter, I think is inappropriate. And so that's, and that is some of it, as I don't know what all the rest of this is. Yes, nothing. So that's, that's my main point. Thank you.
Mr. Lockhart? Mr. President, I believe this motion is out of order. I believe that the WEF grants are something that we have no peer view over. It's, it's private funds. It's, it was discussed by Dr. Hill that it was properly vetted through his office to allow it to move forth. And there was no concerns being expressed from Dr. Hill's office, from my recollection. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Further, we have a whole lot of interactions between high school and the middle school, starting with athletics, starting with robotics, starting with probably a whole, you got, you got the sports teams that transition from, from one level to the next, and there's that grooming. There's that, that piece that goes on, so I'm respectful of the fact that the, the maker of the motion had the right to make the motion. I'm not in agreement with the motion. I'm of the opinion that the motion is out of order because it's something that we have no control over. I will await the ruling of the chair on that particular matter. But if this motion is allowed to go to a vote, I am not in support of this motion. I, 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 I believe it's out of order. It's up to you to tell us if it's in order or not.
Well, the separate question now is, are we speaking to that, to whether it's in order?
I'm going to answer that question. I, though I am in agreement that I would vote against the motion that was made, I believe it's still a proper motion. Even if it's supported by WEF, which is a nonprofit, it still has to go through the school and be approved by the schools. And so if that was done, I understand that that is the case, then I, I see this motion as being in order. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to it? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, President Fury. I just want to say a few things. I'm a licensed healthcare professional. I've worked in mental health and various other medical areas. And I just want to point out the cognitive development of ages twelve through sixteen years of age. Students twelve years old start transitioning from concrete thinking to formal logical relationships within a problem. The transition from concrete thinking to formal logical operations is another stage of cognitive development. This happens over time. Concrete thinking is based on what you can see, hear, feel, and experience in the now, in the moment. It is known as literal thinking. It focuses on physical objects, immediate experiences, and exact interpretations. The formal operational stage is the ability to formulate hypothesis and systemic, systemically test them to arrive at an answer at a problem. Therefore, I feel, as a licensed healthcare professional and member of the board, it's inappropriate for middle school and high school students to be combined in the G S A. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to just give some brief background here. The G S A has been around for quite some time. I just quickly wanted to, I didn't want to speak out of turn and, and get it wrong, but the high schoolers have been attending and, and going to camp any town for a number of years. Dr. D R Green just confirmed with me that she went, I believe, her junior year of high school, which I believe was nineteen ninety-nine. This has been, again, happening, summits of this, this caliber have been happening for a number of years in Windsor, so well over twenty years. I just want to just give some, some data marks there. I am a diversity, equity, inclusion professional. My certification is from Cornell. And I will tell you that when we're thinking about, about diversity, equity, and inclusion in the town of Windsor, we are consistently missing the mark when we have folks speaking to things that they truly don't have any professional background to speak professional background to speak on. Um, I want to commend the people here, especially our students, speaking to, um, their truth, and also speaking to actual data points, not data reached from wherever, out of the sky, um, because of whatever they think is their personal view. There are children that are hurting themselves, there are children that are committing suicide as young as ten years old. How dare we say that they are not allowed to learn about inclusivity as young as eleven and twelve? My son is on a special needs baseball team in town, sponsored by the J C's. He's eleven years old and his teammates are nineteen, as old as nineteen. So when we're thinking about across our children being in same spaces with children who are older than or, or teenagers, that has been going on for decades. I find it interesting, there are folks that on the board that want to say that there's nothing special about this specific grant, when we just had someone speaking on behalf of WEF, that it's never been a situation in twenty years. I think that we have, we have to do our due diligence, we have to make sure that, um, we're on the right side of history and keep our own biases at home. And as the, the person that called in and said, if, you know, if folks are gonna, you know, bring their own biases and, and want to perpetuate hate, then there's stuff that folks need to do November seventh, to make sure that folks don't do that. I do not support this, uh, motion, I think the, the motion is out of order. It is beyond our purview, it's not our money to spend, it's not money that we can say what to do with. And if that's the case, then let's go back twenty years and with a fine-tooth comb, make sure that no issues were, um, against mixing middle schoolers with high schoolers, since we want to say that this is not normal. I don't agree with the motion in any way, it will not get my, my vote. And again, thank you to everyone who came out to support and be against the rhetoric, against the rhetoric that this full board, because what I do denounce is hate, and for people to keep saying that it's the full board that are spewing these things, that is not the case, and you'll never have a vote for me in favor of hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallison? I didn't see any hand raised.
She went ready.
You went. Anybody else on, on this side of the aisle?
Everybody gets a first bite, everybody gets a first bite, yes, that's correct.
Mr. Wallison?
I think, did you have your hand up?
Sorry. Sorry, Mr. Wallison. Mr. Hallic?
Thank you, uh, President Fury, um, I, um, I am in favor of the motion. I think, uh, um, I, I believe the, yeah, the board does have a jurisdiction over, over the middle school and the high school students on this level. I think, um, that we do need to protect our, our kids, especially our middle schoolers who, who are young and a very, at a very impressionable age at that time in their lives. You know, I, I just feel that, that having these, these sexual conversations with possibly high schoolers i- is extremely inappropriate. Um, if the middle school wants to have their own group, I'm, I'm okay with that, I, I would support that, but together, I just, I find that to be, as I said, inappropriate. And that's really all the remarks I wanted to make, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallison?
Yeah, I just have three quick things to say. Uh, the first thing would be that I hope we can get to the vote quickly. Um, and the second thing is that I believe that the motion is made in a way that is , uh, misrepresenting the initiative that was brought forth in the grant. And my last thing is that, uh, I, I am a member of the Windsor Education Foundation myself, and I do support the initiatives that they put forward, the fundraisers and all the things, I'm not on the grant committee, but, uh, the goal of the Windsor Education Foundation is to support educational initiatives that fall outside of the board's purview and budget. So this is exactly in line with, uh, the things that they present, um, every year. I don't really see much of a difference from that, um, explanation of their goal, um, on why we're getting this besides the, you know, the obvious reasons, but that's me, keeping it short and sweet, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, first time, Ms., oh, you did, I'm sorry, I thought you said no.
No, it's okay, sorry, that was confusing, thank you. Um, first, I'm, I'm a bit disappointed that this agenda item is still on here from March meeting. I missed a couple of meetings for, 'cause I had a baby, so I was out for a little while, good reasons, I figure, and I kinda feel like we're stepping back in time right now talking about this. And maybe I can get a little bit of clarification, because I'm not sure, you guys can educate me, please, GSA, does that stand for Gay Straight Alliance or Gender Sexuality Alliance? Either one, I don't really think it makes too much of a difference, all I know is that we need to be inclusive, and I would hope that this community is open to anybody, whoever you're interested in, and that we are really just creating an, a safe space, like everyone keeps saying, for people to be friends with one another, to connect with one another, to, to learn about one another. And so I don't think that this is for the board to be discussing, and I hope that we can really just move on from this and just can close it, close this chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clayce?
I echo your sentiments, so thank you. Um, I just wanna say that, um, interestingly enough, I was at the town council meeting last night, and Windsor is number second in suicides in the state of Connecticut. And the Department of Public Health, local Department of Public Health, is actually doing an entire outreach campaign around that. And so to me, the Gay Straight Alliance is, um, what their purpose is, is to provide students with a safe haven and a place where they feel affirmed and included. And so for that reason alone, I, I will not vote for, um, putting any parameters around that. I also want to acknowledge that it is headed and, um, uh, by a trusted educator who has experience in working with students around issues like this. They have a, have a toolbox, there's many other alliances who help these educators to work with students, and so I don't think this is our purview, I do vote for inclusivity and love, and I hope we move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, second time around, unless you, you really had a separate motion?
No, we're, we're, we're ready to call a question.
Okay. The only thing, I was gonna give Dr. Hill, Dr. Hill an opportunity if either he wanted to speak, or if he wanted anyone else to speak.
Did you say you wanted to speak? I think.
No, no. Wait, wait a minute, for, for, Mr. Just for a point of order, just, just for, can you?
Sorry, point of information, just for clarity, all I stated was that this caucus is prepared to call the question, so we have no more statements from this side, that's all I'm saying.
Um, Ms. Cantor? Then I'm gonna ask Dr. Hill if there's anything that they, the district wanted to say, weigh in on this.
Thank you. Thank you, President Fury. I just wanna say that I have no problem with students being in the GSA club at the junior high, the middle school, or at the high school, but I'm concerned about the age groups because of safety, and I don't think they should be combined ages twelve and eighteen. The parents know that they didn't want their kids on the buses with the junior high and middle school, this was all a problem before, because they didn't feel their kids would be safe on the buses with the junior high and the high school students. So I just wanna keep that point out there, and I have no problem with the clubs, but as long as you don't mix the age groups from twelve years to eighteen, thank you.
Uh, she has a question. Yes, Ms. Cantor?
I just have a, a quick question, I don't know if this is for, um, um, which, for clarity, if I could ask Ms. Bachelder a question. Is the middle school and high school together for the late bus? That's correct, the late bus they are. Won't you do it? Thank you.
Anybody else, before I ask Dr. Hill if they wanna?
It's not a formal service.
Yes, please.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call, um, Dr. Brazzi up, who is the advisor to our GSA, um, she has some commentary, Dr. Brazzi?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, first of all, I wanna say thank you to everyone who came out, um, to the students, the parents, uh, teachers, community agencies. It is, uh, it's overwhelming for me as an educator, trying not to get emotional, it's overwhelming for me as an educator, working with the young people that I work with, um, because as many of you have stated or heard, a lot of times our students are, um, least supported, uh, especially sometimes at home, I have had many students over the years, since my twenty-third year in education and since two thousand and one have been running GSAs, aside from when I was a principal, and then I supported teachers who started GSA, started three GSAs in Hartford alone, so I've had a lot of experience with this, and we have a lot of students who are hurting because they don't have safe spaces to go to. I just, I wanted to ask, I had questions that I wanted to ask for clarification, I see that, um, some of the things have come to light. I know that the mixing of the students is an issue, and I know the sensitive subject area is an issue, and I just wanna point out some elements of the law to make sure that everyone understands before they vote where this can go, um, and what things can be impacted. Um, according to GLAD, uh, the law states that students have the right to learn about LGBTQ issues and must have access to information and resources about LGBTQ issues and people, regardless of objecting school officials or parents. And in addition, in nineteen eighty-four, I don't know if you know, Congress passed the Equal Access Act, and according to that, it requires that public secondary schools, um, including high schools and some middle schools, treat all student-initiated groups equally, regardless of the religious, political, philosophical, or other subject matters discussed at their meetings. Its protections apply to groups that address issues relating to LGBTQ students and matters involving sexual orientation and gender identity, just as they apply to religious and other student support groups. If a school treats one group of students differently from or worse than other, another student, uh, group, because that group represents gender non-conforming or transgender students, that different treatment may constitute unlawful sex discrimination, per the Civil Rights Act, um, it is a civil rights violation. Courts have made it clear that schools cannot impose a different set of student conduct rules for GSAs than for other clubs, and what I'm hearing from members on this side of the room here, minus you, um, congratulations on the baby, um, is that you have concerns about high school students, not all high school students, right? A very select group of students who are LGBTQ or allies, you have issues with them interacting with middle school students. Mind you, we have other groups, um, JROTC, we mentioned the, the bus, but sports clinics, we have, uh, a technology group that not only works with middle school students, they get on a plane and go to a conference, stay in, and stay in hotels. At what point, I don't know what kind of, uh, and, Mr. Panos, I'm gonna refer back to your original email back in June, you said that the students were just going to talk about sexual matters. I don't know where you got that information from, we are still collecting proposals from people, the students and Q Plus, we are, they've been working with us on designing the summit, we are going to review those proposals. At no time do the students sit around and talk about sex, right? We talk about sexual identity, we talk about gender identity, if you look at the list that I sent, uh, I don't know if you all got this, but the things that the students have done for the, not just Windsor High School community, but the, um, the state of Connecticut and, and broader New England, is that they have done several professional development sessions for staff, so that staff know how to ask a student their pronouns, right? Or if they mess up on the pronouns, how to correct it, right? They have, they have educated stakeholders on, like, last year, students led, um, during our ed camp in November, led, or February, um, led workshops on the comments that are being said in the classrooms. In the very first round, they had three stations that teachers could rotate, in the very first round, two of the tables, I heard the teacher say, "Oh yeah, but those are just made-up scenarios, what actually happens in the classroom?" And the students said, "These are the scenarios, these are real scenarios that have happened to us," and the teachers were floored. They did not realize that these things are happening in their classrooms, because sometimes there's so much going on, we don't pay, we don't hear everything, but once those teachers went through, they started hearing them in the classroom, and a student came running to me the next day and said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use her name, but it was like, Ms. Martin just called somebody out, and was so happy that a teacher who was in the classroom was implementing the skills that our students, who you think just sit around and talk about sex, our students taught to and had conversations with the teachers in the room. This isn't, I know you have it on here as a discussion, and it, that word, I wrote that word down, 'cause it came up, this is not a discussion, this is about the law. And there are civil rights violations happening, because I don't see the JROTC or any of the other groups that do high school work with middle schoolers, I don't see them up here, you know who I see? I see my students in the GSA, I see parents who are supporting their children, and I see staff members who support our students. I don't see the other groups that have high schoolers that work with middle school students or elementary students as young as them, and so my question to you is, how far down the road do you wanna go? Because this is a civil rights violation, you're only targeting the GSA. That's all I have to say.
Mr. President? Point of order?
Mr. President, I rise to a point of order.
Mr. Lockhart?
I am trusting and verifying, but again, I am asking that this motion is out of order, um, based off the fact that we potentially by our vote could be violating some federal and/or state law, and putting the Board of Educate, the Windsor, Connecticut Board of Education in, um, civil, um, harm. So I'm, I'm raising a point of order that this motion is out of order, and that we should not even take a vote on it.
I would agree, um, uh, at this time, based on the discussion by, uh, Dr. Brazzi and the potential for us, um, some points were made about riding in school buses, riding in planes with the Technology Student Association with middle schoolers and high schools, high schoolers, and with that potential, I find that the motion is out of order. We're back to the agenda?
We're back to seven G.
Seven?
Because we, we were still under discussion, but he made a, I'm, Mr. Panos made a motion, the motion has been ruled out of order, so technically we're still at agenda item seven G, unless you have, Phil, as chair, we've satisfied this matter, and we move on.
Uh, I, I do, I think we, we've satisfied it, everybody has had a chance to weigh in on this.
We go back to seven B, sir.
We're back to item seven B, which is setting the agenda for the graduation Windsor High School class of two thousand and twenty-four. Dr. Hill?
Mr. President, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I move the Board of Education approved Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four as the graduation date for the class of two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, anything you'd like to say, Dr. Hill, about this?
I would say no, no.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, any further discussion?
No.
Being and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. Next item is policy adoption.
It's AR.
The AR?
Yep. No, as I said, the regulation, so this, these are, this discussion is for revised AR five one three two for student dress, and these regulations are for information only, as it's an AR.
And these regulations are for information only as it's an AR.
And so, Dr. Hill, do you want to say anything about the AR?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as, uh, Vice President Lockhart said, this is an AR, so for the public, that's an administrative reg, and the board therefore doesn't have to vote on it in terms of approval. That is something that is done with the superintendent's authority and along with his staff or her staff. Um, I shared earlier in the spring and I'll share it again, this has come about because of the work of students, which I am always looking for student advocacy. And so, the students at Windsor High School, um, the Action Club, right, it was the Action Club? And they started the work and I started later in the, the winter, my student advisory group at each of the schools down through the fifth grade. So these students, all, this was an issue that was important to all of them to, uh, have some changes done to the clothing policy. And, or I'm saying improperly right now, policy, as they corrected me. So I did not know, all these years going back to like two thousand and two, I thought this was a Board of Education policy and I continually told students, they need to address the Board of Education. And they did a point of order, like Vice President Lockhart, and told me, actually, Dr. Hill, we did our research and it is an AR and therefore it is all you that makes the decision. I didn't know that, I really didn't for a long time. So we discussed over a few months the, um, potential for changes and the ideas behind it. And so, the big things are, the hats and the hoodies are no longer a focal point. Um, and I'm kind of glad, this is a, a different topic to talk about at the start of school year, I'm, I'm excited to talk about anything else. But going through the high school, uh, on a regular basis, it's amazing how many students actually aren't even wearing their hats or putting on their hoods. Which is what I expected in my experience in education. Soon as you tell young people they can actually do something, it's not cool because it's not taboo. Um, so the majority of students are not walking around with their hats and hoods on. Uh, Mr. Parker, the principal's here, if you choose the one to question him. Um, so, and also a reason, a good reason for it, and we discussed over the months, this is an entry level discipline issue for so many students. Um, and I believe the teachers are happy to not have to deal with this because you, you take your hat off, take your hood off, take your hat off, take your hood off. Um, I talked to students, told them, I just want to see great academic performance. If you can wear a hat and a hood together, I don't really care, just perform academically. And so I believe our students are mature enough and they, they've shown thus far that this is not an issue for them. And additionally, there is no rule like this at college campuses, uh, save religious schools, and I know, uh, HBCUs still have very strict rules. But, um, students can learn it in college with hoods on and hats on, and I just believe what they share. This is archaic, that we are saying that they can't learn in our high school, but we're preparing them for higher education. So we've just gotten rid of that. I consider it a unnecessary stumbling block.
Okay, are there questions for Dr. Hill?
Well.
Ms. Taylor?
Um, just want to give kudos to the students. I sat in on a couple of their sessions and they were so diligent, to your point, Dr. Hill, they did their research and informed me on some really great things. Shout out to all of them. I don't want to name them by name because I don't want to miss anyone, but, um, under the leadership of Andrea Chudzik and team, um, I was just blown away by their, their candor and I was really blown away by them wanting to do what's best for all. They hosted their own survey, it was, it was amazing. So I just want to lift the fact that this was very much student-led.
And let me throw in there, please, Mr. President, I forgot and Ms. Taylor just reminded me. So many of the students who were part of the Action Club and my advisory group were also seniors. So they knew from the outset, they absolutely would not benefit from this. But they still spoke for the students who were behind them. They said, we knew we weren't going to benefit, however, you know, we want this change to happen for the students who are coming up.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Hill? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Dr. Hill, thank you, President Fury. Um, I do have a few concerns over safety about dress code because, you know, I'm always about safety first. So you know that with me, so you know I'll always ask. Um, if someone's in a lab, I don't know what your labs are like. When I went to high school and college, we did big labs with bunsen burners and chemicals, scalpels. So if you're wearing some type of clothing and leaning over a bunsen burner, like my, uh, microbiology professor did, his hair caught on fire during the middle of our class. So you had to get out the, the blanket and hit him over the head. Now, do you operate bunsen burners or anything like that, or work with chemicals? Or over stoves where clothing could lean over to a flame or a hot burner? Or in, I don't know, do you have like shop where you use, um, equipment that could catch clothing or fire? I mean, there's certain things. I don't know, I'm not in the school system. So that's my big number one concern is safety.
Right, so in our, in our science labs, in our shops, we still follow OSHA guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
And we still follow Flynn Scientific guidelines, and we still make sure that when we are in labs, our students have on protective gear, and we also make sure that their hair is tied back, their hoods are off, so when they are doing labs, we still follow state and federal guidelines for doing labs. So at no time during any lab will you see a student that is in an unsafe situation as a result of their clothing.
Okay, and then, um, what about, um, students, I feel that a lot of the clothing now, and I'm not in the school, that they advertise is very risque for women, for students. I mean, if they're wearing clothes that are dropped off their shoulder, blouses, is that part of the attire that they're wearing? It's off their shoulder? You know, like for a formal event, I, I mean, it's not a problem.
I don't have everything memorized in here, but it's, it's definitely written out, um, so you can look at the AR. But, um, one of the things that the students wanted to address, and did I see your hand already reaching, Ms. Taylor, like, so there's gonna be a lot of talk this way, so let me just say real quick. Um, I learned from the students, again, they can advocate for themselves. So our rules have been, uh, very sexist. And this is dad of three daughters, and I'm very old school, but again, as you heard with our GSA discussions, um, we have to put our stuff aside.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, you know, when we say risque, and you know, I'm not going to get in a deep philosophical conversation, but we have to go to store, we buy clothes, there's a style, things change over time, and I do know every generation, the parents thought their clothing wasn't appropriate. So, um, there are rules, no one's coming to school and, you know, naked or, you know, nothing praising.
Do you allow midriffs? Do you know what those are? They, they come up under here and your whole abdomen is exposed in your back? Is that allowed?
And I, I believe that, that's fine. And again, I'm saying, I, it doesn't interfere with their learning. And I don't, I, I have no problem with their clothing, their dress. We purchase it and they're appropriately dressed, that's their freedom of expression. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
So then you wouldn't have a problem with someone wearing maybe some type of military shirt? Like for the United States Army or Marine Corps or something like that, because that would be discrimination.
You asking me that?
I'm asking you. I'm asking you because I want to know.
Everybody in a military uniform.
Because I'll send my son in every day with something like that because you know how I'm for that. But I just want to make sure that they're not discriminating, you know, it is free speech.
We are, it's, I'm gonna, you know, yield, but we are, uh, work in progress, and so, um, I don't want any of our students to feel discriminated against, which again, the young ladies have for years. And I was an enforcer as a vice principal at the high school, and so, you know, I, I'm glad because there are a lot of issues around the dress that were always focused on the young women. And so, they're in the stores, you, we know some of the things that they can't buy. Also in the AR states, like in certain venues and events for the school, they'll be told what to wear for that particular thing, but we, we're not policing their clothes the way people have before.
Well, they're formal gowns, and I know for the graduation and the ceremonies for the, um, what they give out for the, um, awards and certain things, I see they do dress up very nicely. I, no, and I was just wondering, I don't know, I'm not in there, so I ask.
So I'm gonna, I, I thought to myself this summer, I want to invite all board members to take some time to walk through the high school. I think the high school, i- it is the flagship. It's the one that gets probably the most, uh, other than this, this September. It gets the most attention. Um, but I, I, I really, I thought about this summer, I'm like, I'm gonna invite the board members to come through, and not as a posse, but individually. So you can call Mr. Parker, you know, or myself, and we can go through, but you should see what you probably hear more about than you actually know. So it's an environment I think people should walk through, and I think a lot of people operate on when they went to high school. I will do one shade moment because I told this student I was gonna do it. So when I was meeting with my GSA students, one of the students, you know, they need to make sure they are sensitive to those of us who were born before them. Because I was told I'm one of those people, I was born in the nineties. I was a little offended by that, once I figured out what the student was saying. But I was very proud of their speech though that was, uh, played on the recording. I, I do want to say that. And that student knows I'm coming for her, so I told her, I'm between you and your diploma, so don't ever say that again. That's all.
I do want to say that, um, I know that the swim team dresses up for every away game and they look really sharp. And I think it sets a nice example of what you're going to in the future for your profession or field, that you know what you have to look like, you know, in certain things. So I think that's nice. And even like the formal dances and things like that, so they, they know, they need to know the different styles and what to wear and when to wear it. So, thank you.
Thirty years in this field, they do.
Thank you.
They look amazing at prom.
Anyone on this side with questions? Ms. Taylor?
I said, I, I just, we teeter, but this time it just went over the cliff. We have to be very careful about here, how we're singling out our young ladies. It is such, it, it's, it's really, it's misogynistic, it's the fact that we're, you have all this to read and you, and folks are still pointing out girls with their midriff showing. My daughter wore a crop top the first day of school, she's a straight A student, scholar, athlete. There's no issues with her, she's amazing. And her belly button was showing the first day. And nobody's asking what the boys are wearing, and I just feel like we need to be very careful to, to stop consistently over-sexualizing our girls. And and, and be careful with the words we choose because everyone is watching us. If you're gonna pick apart what a young lady is wearing to her high school, then we gotta do the same thing with the boys. And what these students have decided is they're gonna, everyone's gonna stop doing it, period, because it's not right. Showing your midriff, having a spaghetti strap top on doesn't mean you're not part of the honor society. You know what I mean? Doesn't mean that you're not, you know, about to head off to an amazing college because you wore a spaghetti strap top. And it also doesn't mean that you're not gonna get a, a great job later on. I have pictures of myself in the nineties at Windsor High School with my stomach out. And the reason why I wasn't dress coded is because I was a good girl. We have to stop cherry picking who we pick on at our schools. We have to stop cherry picking and, and, and picking on the same kids because of whatever reason. And we definitely need to stop doing it from our seat. They are watching us and it is inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Galinsky?
Thank you. Um, I do want to piggyback off of what Ms. Taylor said because I, I agree with so much of what she said. She has, um, a high schooler and I have a third grader, and yet I find that the clothes that are being sold to even the youngsters are the same as what is being sold to teenagers. This is what we, this is where we live right now. This is what is offered to us. And also keep in mind that the way people dress is how they express themselves. It is how they show what they're interested in. My daughter, she is my little like punky Brewster, it's fantastic and I don't ever want to limit her. Huh? Oh, I have a nineteen nineties apparently. Uh, it's very, thank you, thank you. Everyone knows that on here. Everyone who left, I don't think does. But I love that she expresses herself through fashion, and I would hate, hate to single out anybody and tell them that they can't express themselves because of the clothes that they're wearing, when they are not offensive to anyone, nor does it restrict their learning.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Mr. Panos?
Yeah, let's just, let's just talk about some of the inconsistencies here. You talk about, uh, the, begins with, um, the dress code at the top, that, that Windsor Public Schools are professional centers of learning and dress and behavior should reflect this while preparing students for college, well, they can, this is career readiness. Now, uh, is this, let's take a look at some of this, you know, you have people coming in with, you say you can come in with durags, bonnets, bandanas, baseball cap, beanies, hoods. Now, in typical settings, they don't do that. This is, you know, uh, you, um, you rip jeans, I don't know, tank tops and, you know, spaghetti straps, all this, you know, is, is, is this, you know, uh, appropriate attire for a typical, um, professional, um, setting? I don't think so. Yeah, shoes, boots, sneakers, sandals. You have sandals, really? Um, you know, that's, that's almost, uh, a safety issue. So, you, you know, I, I don't see that this is, I think this has gone too far here. It seems that the, the students have nominated this. I, it'd be interesting to know, uh, what the staff came up with, uh, with this regard. Um, the, the idea of head covering, for example, include hoods, um, it can be possibly a safety issue. If you were, um, you know, in the extreme, you know, uh, if you had, you had someone uh, was, you know, threatening the school, uh, you would need to know, uh, who is who without being able to cover the face with a head, um, if, and so, um, it, it can present possibly a safety issue. Um, now, with regard to the, the closing, if, if you want to, rough man, boys, um, you know, I think last, back in February, um, after Ms. Vialli had commented on the, um, boys, uh, we offered an amendment. I see, I'm very glad to see that you, um, uh, that you have reneged on this and, uh, that you've gone back and the way you, the, the five voted here, uh, it was precisely, we made a, a motion that no pants, you know, be hanging out below, you know, and that the, there'd be no exposing the buttocks of the underwear, i.e. the, the sagging. So we put that up for a motion and, and we were rejected. Uh, now it's back in here, well, I'm glad for that. So I see some positive aspects to this. However, I still see that there are, uh, several aspects which I just mentioned, which I think are inappropriate for this kind of a setting. Um, if, um, you, you would not have your professionals dr- uh, dressed like this, and, and so I don't, you know, your, your staff members. Uh, so I don't think you should have your, your students, um, uh, dressed like this. Um, and if there's any issue of discrimination, you think that boys are allowed to do something, well, you can, you're welcome to put those restrictions in. And as I, as I pointed out, that one being the exposing, you know, the, the pants sagging, uh, and yet, um, uh, Ms. Taylor voted in opposition to that particular point back in, what, February? So, uh, you know, so I'm glad, anyway, I'm glad, I'm glad it's in here. So if, if you think that this is a benefit, I mean, I, I want to disagree, um, I think, like, other than, other than thi- this and a few other items, um, uh, which I think m- m- most of this, it was already covered in the existing, um, regulations that we had. Um, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't see that this is, other than the no pants, you know, no sagging, um, most of this that is, um, uh, that is listed has, was already covered. Um, and much of what is new, I, I doubt is of value because there's no restriction I see here on, um, coats, jackets, or other attire normally worn uh, as outerwear and, you know, including down vests. So I, I take it that that's, that's in here, I don't know. You, you didn't, you didn't address that. Um, but, um, you know, the, the majority of this, which deals with clothing with violent language or hate speech, profanity, pornography, you know, that was covered with the previous ones, so I, I guess there's no, I have no problem with that, but, um, um, there's, um, uh, you have accessories that could, um, that could be considered dangerous, that, that was there, sunglasses, that was there, headphones. But it would be interesting to know how the, um, how the staff, uh, inputted, or what, what input the staff had with it. or what what input the staff had with this, what did they think of this? And I I remind you that there is a um uh there is a phrase that is disruptive of the educational process. So, we're talking about, you know, you know, you can call it whatever you want, uh but uh you know, it was you see revealing, provocative, or all this sort of thing, uh you know, anybody can 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 do that. And so, and part of it is saying here that uh people, you know, you have in your in your um values here, that um all students and staff should understand that they are responsible for managing their own personal distractions without regulating individual students' clothing and self-expression, right? This means, don't be bothered if you see something that you find attractive, let's say, you know, and uh and provocative, right? This is basically, you you should learn to do it, yes, I suppose they should. But after all, we're we're in a teenage uh environment, it's it's is disruptive to the, this is the reason why for years people did this, it was a, it's because it is disruptive to the educational environment. But, you know, so you uh, you know, so I I would say that this is, it has some good points, um but it has some um, it has some um, some points though that are, you know, a little bit, that that are safety issues and and ignore obvious distractions. And so, um I think I think it needs some work, and I would certainly hope that the the staff would have much stronger input into this than what it appears. Thank you.
Mr. Panos raised a question if you wanna.
So I don't, thank you, Mr. Panos, I don't, let me just say this, I even meeting with the students, there are things that I like, I still don't like because I'm old school and you guys see the way I'm dressed, and I've said it before, I've been dressing like this right through high school. So this is like my favorite mode of dress, um bow ties and all. So I wish everybody dressed like this. My teachers do not dress like this, right? So Mr. Gruber, he tries to hang with me and Mr. Mahalco, they try, but they don't dress like this, but that's my own preference. And that's the whole point in what Ms. Taylor was saying, like, we can't keep projecting ourselves on other people. There aren't, like, uh Ms. Cantor's questions were answered, the safety issues, it's not like the kids went out and started buying new clothes after this AR. This is stuff they were wearing twenty years ago, thirty years ago, it's not new stuff. And so, they're safe as my staff explained. As far as the teachers' input, we did not seek teachers' input. They don't ask students to help them dress, so I felt like, and once the students made it clear and it's AR and it's my call, I don't care what the teachers think about the students' clothes, they're not buying their clothes. And the distraction piece, to clarify for you, historically, it was not a safety issue in schools in America whatsoever. Historically, it was a patriarchal system of rulemaking, that's just real, and I know the history of education in America from start to present. And they made the rules, men, men made the rules, and that's what they chose. And I will continue to point to colleges, because we're all proud when our students are on the college campus. If you turn on any TV and look at any student section, section at a game, excuse me, this coffee, you will see them wearing everything, but no one will question those students sitting at a college campus. And you can pick any college you choose. So, the rules were not necessary, and we were just simply carrying on an old patriarchal system. And because it could be changed, it's changed, there will be no further discussion about this AR with anyone. The decision's made, we're just reading it to the public, and we're moving on.
Mr. Wallaston has had a chance, and Mr. Wallaston, for people here in the audience, and Ms. Taylor are both uh the representatives to the high school and have been involved with uh sitting in on discussions um with uh where the dress code was being formulated. Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I just wanted to speak up because sometimes we forget the entire story, I know it's been a while since we had this conversation, but the motion that uh was made by um the Republican caucus was to create a a policy, well, we we were, they were attempting to amend policy with zero tolerance like words. So we were changing where it said, uh teachers may or admin may. We were attempting to go into like words like shall not and words like must to create like zero tolerance um language around sagging only. And members of my caucus felt like that was very discriminatory and targeting of uh black young men who usually are the offenders of sagging, we never, I even once said that I don't believe that sagging is the appropriate way to wear your pants, but I did not feel that that motion was appropriate, I didn't feel like it was much more than uh targeting a specific group of people because of the words that you chose to um pick on those specific actions. Just to provide clarification on why your motion did not work out.
Anyone else, anyone else with questions for Dr. Hill, and I just asked based on the time that you tried to keep it brief. Mr. Hallic, I don't think you've spoken or asked questions on this.
Um, thank you.
Well, point of order, we, you know, this is, um Robert's Rules of Order, right? There's no limitation here unless you.
I I just asked for.
Yeah, we're not just answering, we're not just answering, you know, board member can can make comments as you want.
And I didn't say they couldn't.
Oh, it seemed like, seemed like you did, but go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Hallic. Thank you, Mr. President, um I do have a question around around the 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 hate speech aspect of it, of this, um um. Yes, yes, correct. Like, how, how are we gonna, where are 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 we gonna draw the line of what's hate speech? And and what is not? You know, there are, there are phrases such as, um, um, don't, don't tread on me, um, um, make America, make make America great again. And I'm sure, I'm sure there's others throughout throughout the political spectrum, um that that one could determine. Um, some could consider it possible hate speech, and others would not. So I just wanna see where 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 we're gonna draw that line.
So it's, and and again, in thirty years, it's not a line that is just a solid line. And we really don't have a tough time, it's more about people's political feelings, like you're talking about the make America great again, that's not hate speech, it's just people have their feelings. Um, and um I did a refresher, because I actually was in grad school in the nineties, back in the nineties. Um, and the case is actually from South Hadley, Massachusetts, where the students went all the way to Supreme Court over their T-shirt in the distraction. So, all schools sit in the Connecticut, and our rules, like, this is not new, this is all based on that case. So, it it's a pretty high threshold because you're addressing people's um rights to free speech. So even when I was at Windsor High as a vice principal, there are times we look at certain things and say, oh, that's questionable. Or typically, when it became an issue was when staff and students were all talking about it, right? Like, you're not walking around the building with shirts with um swear words on it, and or big pictures of guns. Um, so, the don't tread on me is not one, I mean, you're just giving examples, I understand, but that's not it. And as as much as there may be factions that feel a certain way, make America great again is not, I can't, I couldn't um support, you know, Mr. Parker saying that kid has a hate speech shirt on because it says make America great again. But ultimately, the building level administrators and the staff will determine um what's questionable, and they'll have to have that discussion with the student and his or her family. But there's very rarely an individual student, I can just say in thirty years, who will wear something that is alre- that's not already something that's out there in other districts. Like, it's it's like a, um, kids follow each other, that's just what it is, like, they they follow each other. So you can keep an eye out for when they start wearing something that's causing an issue, and kids will talk about it. But the freedom of speech has to be protected, so that case, and I'm forgetting the name, but it was South Hadley, Massachusetts, and I believe it was ninety six. So, it's it's very clear when something gets kids' attention, and they'll talk about it. And often the student wearing it will know that he or she wore that specifically to get that reaction.
I also um just wanted here to say, um, I'm okay with wearing wearing hats outside of the building, I don't think in the building they're as appropriate. If if you have a class that's gonna go outside for an activity or or gym class, I can definitely see, you know, wearing a hat. But I think in the in the in the building and in the classroom, it's, but in the classroom especially, it's unprofessional um to be doing that. Let's see, what else did I have? And also, um sandals as well, we know they can come off very easily. If something happens, if there's an emergency and you have to leave quickly, you know, a lot of folks, yeah, if you're wearing sandals, you may not be able to get out as fast, um so that's a little bit of a concern for me as well. And that's all I have for comments, thank you.
So I just wanna say, Mr. Hallic, I agree with you on the hats, I do, there's a lot that I agree on, but we don't have a real valid reason to tell students not to, because they, you know, and Mr. Parker visited other high schools, and you know, he found that, you know, all all the schools are doing the same thing. It's like the hat doesn't prevent them from learning, again, I'm very old school, and men don't wear hats in buildings, period. But I can't project, again, my culture, my upbringing, my timeframe, the nineties, on everyone right now. I've been teaching college since nineteen ninety six, and I've taught undergrads through graduate school, and students come to class with everything on. And somehow they, I have to keep telling myself this, because I'm very particular, if it was up to me, every teacher would look like this every day, because that's how my teachers looked in the seventies and eighties, but I know these teachers would attack me if I tried to get them to dress like this every day. And I would want students to dress like this, but that's my preference. There's no real valid reason for us to project onto our students, even though I agree with you, the hats, the hoodies, stuff I would never wear in a building. But in college, and we went to the same undergrad school, kids seem to come out of Westfield, right, with degrees, great careers, and they wore pajamas to class. So we gotta be fair, right, like, we just have to be fair.
Okay, anybody here?
Thank you, President Fury, um I just wanna comment on open-toed shoes and sandals. Uh, they're very dangerous, I believe it's still against the law to drive with them on, and like you said, as Mr. Hallic said, if you have an emergency and you gotta go, whatever gets stomped on your foot is your fault because you chose to be negligent. That's the same thing working at the high school with cooking, or the junior high, the middle school, you're cooking, you spill something on your foot, you slide, you're gonna fall down, you're gonna be, have a burn, and things fall off, at least if your foot is covered, it's more protected than open-toed shoes. The other thing is, I wanna ask you, Dr. Hill, how this is going to pa- impact the middle school? This dress code at the high school also impacts the middle school, so are we having different guidelines for the middle school and the high school, everybody can wear the same, and the elementary school?
This is AR, so.
Okay, I'm just making sure, okay.
This is the district, um like I said, in all, in all the schools, I see, you'll see a few little, the little ones, wearing their baseball caps.
Yes.
Um, I'll pick on Principal Jorgensen for a minute, you'll see middle school kids wearing their cats now with permission from the superintendent.
So, so when it, so when it's Halloween and everybody comes decked out in their costumes, it's not gonna be a problem?
Like they do every year?
I don't know, I don't know, I I told you, I'm not here, I don't know.
I'm gonna give another invite.
When I went to high school, kids dressed up for, shh, so get away my secrets, they got dressed up for Halloween, it was really hysterical.
So Windsor kids have always dressed up for Halloween, so that's that's not new. They also do pajama days, that I hate, but that's not new.
Me too, because the bacteria goes all through.
But I'm gonna invite the board again. Let's go through, I know you all are representatives to particular buildings, but please, please take me up on the offer, I will go through with it. I, if you wanna go in the morning and you want me to get you breakfast, I'll I'll do that. But I want you to go through the schools and engage with the students and the staff in the building. You can't get a true sense of what's going on in the schools unless you're in the building. And so you will see, oh, this is really not an issue. I mean, Mr. Parker, would you like to, like, share just two minutes, and Ms. Jorgensen, you wanna talk about how you're legally doing it now?
Yeah, so.
She's been illegal for a few years.
I did, when when it was like change of classes, you just stand up against the wall because they come shooting down. Hundreds of kids come this way to the classroom where they're leaving.
Move the same direction.
I was, I was on the right and they're coming right at you like it's a one-way street. So that's when I've been in there, so I try, you know, okay, good, you'll walk ahead of me like my husband does, you'll take the brunt, the crash. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing and hearing none. Move on to the next agenda item, which is seven D, approval of C S D E partnership grant, is there a motion? That was thirty-six minutes.
Seven D, Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approved the submission. Approved the submission of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Family Resource Center located at Oliver Ellsworth School partnership grant to the state of Connecticut.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion made by Mr. Lockard, second by Mr. Panos, and are we gonna, is Ms. Morales gonna speak to this, Dr. Hill?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't think I have appropriate shoes on today.
Heyo, be nice.
Always be in my stilettos. Um, so yes, we are putting forward, or we have put forward, um with your approval, oh, am I supposed to press something? Am I good? Okay, I'm good. We are putting forward the uh F R C grant that has been in the district for quite some time now. Uh, this is the first time that the state of Connecticut has asked that um it goes through the board. Um, and so this evening it is, uh or has been presented to you, I think, last week. Um, and so I don't know if there are any questions that you have on the grant, um I'm happy to answer any of your questions. It is a year-long grant, so.
Is there anything different in this grant other than it's coming to the full board from past?
No, I mean, we we are adding more programming and uh that comes out of our office, but nothing drastically different, no.
Any questions of Ms. Morales?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Mr. Lockard, second by Mr. Panos, to accept this grant, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, nay, abstention, motion carries nine zero zero.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lockard?
Move that the Board of Education approves the M L U with Central Connecticut State University to work collaboratively to to develop the C T E dual enrollment courses.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made by Mr. Lockard, second by Mr. Panos regarding the M L U with C C S U. And uh, Dr. Haiti, do you wanna speak to this, or just if there's questions about it, or?
Yeah, so I can answer any questions, it's just um an M L U with C C S U that will allow us to send up to twenty students from the high school to take classes, up to two classes at C C S U free of charge. Um, if they choose to, classes that are aligned with our C T E programming. Um, and part of the partnership, it is not in the M L U, but we're working with C C S U to get some of our teachers in the C T E department certified so that we can start offering dual enrollment classes under the manufacturing pathway. So that's kind of a push that we're doing with the C T E department, this M L U just came in perfect time to allow our students who are interested, um they can take as, you know, you can read um the M L U one point, one point one. Um, it does talk about students being able to take classes on campus, online, or um remote or on campus, as long as they have the academic prerequisites um to the courses.
Okay, questions from the board?
Just a clarification, the C T E means career and technical.
Correct, yes, thank you. And I'm very excited about this, and I would think many others who've been interested. And I would think many others who've been interested in both sides of the aisle on, on more opportunities for CTE and vocational opportunities. So this is great, another, another, another college that students will be able to get hopefully dual, dual credit and hopefully some of them be able to be even on a university campus. So thank you so much. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions, motion carries nine zero zero.
Mr. President? Mr. Lockard? I move the Board of Education approve its submission of the required criteria to, I mean, for the CAPE Level 2 Distinctional Award to be submitted by the Superintendent's Office.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockard, seconded by Mr. Panos. This is, the, the good thing about this award this year, often CAPE changes some of the criteria. And this year it didn't change the criteria. I worked with Sally Brown to, to go through both our policy book of what we had on record as well as past meetings. And I didn't get any comments from any board members, so I'm hoping this is a slam dunk for us, especially since we'll be usually attending en masse the CAPE convention. It's always a good opportunity, if you are awarded this, to get your picture with the Commissioner of State Department of Education. Are there any questions about the grant? Seeing none? About the, you said grant, about the CAPE...
Level 2 distinction.
Level 2 distinction award. Thank you, Mr. Lockard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, abstention, motion carries nine zero zero. Lost the superintendent. Will you give the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Thank, that was a great report, thank you.
Should we make a motion for that?
He...
As you can go, we don't need him anyway. You could put Ms. Batcholder to do it.
Ms. Batcholder's gonna start for him. Okay. If you want to take the parts that you are involved with, or I'll leave it to you.
Sure, which one?
Your name is on here.
So I will do, so the fiscal year...
So you want to do the fiscal, fiscal HC?
Excuse me, no, staffing update.
All right, okay.
I'll just start and when he comes back, he can take it from there.
All right, this is for information only. Yep.
Okay. So every year we come to you with regards to how our staffing was throughout the end of last year and into the summer months. So we have hired, sorry, hang on one second, sorry about that. We had all of our administrators actively recruiting efforts at the recruiting fairs over the winter and spring months. We were able to hire quite a few individuals even before, teachers specifically even before the summer hit. A couple of our interns actually from last year are now our teachers. So that was great because, you know, it's, we get a, an interview for about five, four months with on the, on the job training. So we are luckily to have those interns now as certified teachers for us. As all, we've always have, we advertise to all the major outlets for advertisement of our certified and non-certified staff. Our hiring practices have not changed. So when principals and directors and supervisors are looking for certified staff, they bring in a committee. They do at least two, if not three rounds with the committee at the school building level and then they make a recommendation to HR. And then I interview all certified staff. And I've actually now started interviewing everyone. So even admin assistants, admin professionals do go through me before they are hired. Our new teacher staff orientation was a hit again. We had a great turnout. We partnered with the Historical Society. We did a ice cream social and our, our new teachers got to walk around and really get to know the town. I believe the Historical Society loves doing this. It was a, a new thing we started just because it rained a few years ago and it's, it's been a hit doing that instead of, you know, a big lunch. So our statistics as of September 15th, so, you know, normally you get it month to month, but I wanted to get you as, as far into September as I could. So as of September 15th, there are 69 new employees to the district. This number includes all of our teachers, administrators, supervisors, behavior techs, food service. Teacher openings were mainly due to retirements, resignations, people moving, and child rearing. And for all new hired certified employees, we hired a total of 40 this year, which is actually the lowest since I've been doing this in HR. We've, you know, tipped 80 at, at times. So the number was 40 this year for certified staff. And the breakdown between male and female is 12.5% male and 87.5% female. And out of our newly hired certified staff, 37.5 of them are educators of color. That's one of the highest percents we've had in many years. And now our district percentage has increased to 29.20%. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Batcholder?
So, I'm sorry, I may have missed it here. How many positions are not filled, as you say? Are they all filled?
So we have a special ed position open at Sage Park right now. We have an SLP position open at pre-K 2. And we have a handful of paraeducators that we still are looking to hire.
But other than that, we're up to full strength.
Other than, I mean, so because of maternity leaves, we're always, you know, have that long-term sub posting, you know, at... So though, I'm not including that in the actual full-time teaching higher numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll go back to 8A, school opening comments. Dr. Hill?
Excuse me, on August 22nd, we welcome back faculty and staff for this year's convocation at Windsor High School. This year's guest speaker was former commissioner for the Connecticut State Department of Education, Dr. Theodore Icam Ted Surging. After convocation, staff returned to the buildings for the remainder of the day for lunch and professional development. I want to thank the Windsor Historical Society, as Ms. Batcholder mentioned, and the Windsor Chamber of Commerce and, excuse me, for hosting the new teachers, the ice cream social. It was very nice. And them walking the grounds and actually got to see some new exhibits that I wasn't aware of that were there. So it was very nice and they got to spend time with some new staff. On Thursday, August 24th, the Office of Family and Community Partnerships held the second annual block party on Sage Park and WHS grounds. I want to thank Christina Morales and her team, Jen Phelps, and then the volunteers, businesses and organizations who provided backpacks that were given out and with the requisite equipment in them and supplies. Or Amazon, Hartford Foundation for Public Given through grant funds, the Kiwanis Club of Windsor, Taco Resolutions, and Target, their community grant. Volunteers were groups and individuals. Amazon had 10 to 12 staff there. Jose De Fraga, a proquonic dad, Jeanette Angel, and OE Mom, Margie DeGata, class from the past, and Linda Roberts of the Kiwanis Club in Windsor. And Windsor High Schools, we had Windsor High School students, there were seven of them. Sasha Campbell, Jasmine Brown, Adia Hill, Shanique Hill, Gabriella Gartrell, Trinity Lang, Gabriella Mises Sanchez, and Adriana Nelson. And there were teachers at stations, Felicia Hamilton did face painting, Jasmine Kirhan did face painting, Dr. Monica Brazzi, you heard from earlier, did face painting, and Ms. Stacy Paley, the backpacks. Opening day week, our staff welcomed our students back on Monday, August 28, 2023. The Calling All Windsor Men event returned on the first day after hiatus prior to COVID. Thank you to parent Jimmy McMichael for making the event possible. Cabinet and central office administrators also visited all schools on the first day of school. Students and staff were very engaged in activities throughout the day and all seemed excited to be back to school. On August 29th, the Board of Education appointed Ms. Mary Cristofaro as the new Director of People and Special Education Services. Ms. Cristofaro comes to Windsor from Hartford Public Schools, where she served as a Director of Special Education and People Support Services since July 2012. Ms. Cristofaro earned her Bachelor of Arts in General Studies with the Council of Human Services from the University of Connecticut, a Master's in Special Education from St. Joseph's College, an educational leadership degree, and most recently, her Superintendent of School certification, the O-93 from Sacred Heart University. She will begin with the district on October 1st. September 18 to 24 is National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Governor Mont will present a proclamation for the state in recognition of adult education and family literacy week on Wednesday, September 20th at the state Capitol. Ms. Mayella Aguirre Earnest will represent Windsor's adult education and Windsor Public Schools. Today, Mayor Tranks presented a proclamation for Windsor in recognition of adult education and family literacy week on Tuesday, September 19th with all staff and students of our Windsor Adult Education Program and LPW. And my coffee talks will continue this school year, as they have in the previous two years. We did have a special coffee talk on August 28th for the purpose of answering parents' questions and concerns regarding the OE mode. The first official coffee talk is scheduled for Tuesday, September 26th at The Bean at 226 Broad Street at 10:00 a.m. Please RSVP on the district website and the schedule for the coffee talks is also posted on the website. At this time, I will go back to Ms. Batcholder, who will now go with the fiscal year 2023 year-end financial report.
You want to make them first?
Mr. President? Mr. Lockard? Move the Board approves the return of $907 to the town with the details of the projected budget slash category surpluses and deficits as attached. Final amount subject to the completion of the audit.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockard, seconded by Mr. Panos. We'll now have a discussion about that, or a presentation about that, Ms. Batcholder? Is there anything?
Yeah, I mean, there, we talk budget all the time, so if there's any questions, I'll answer those.
Mr. Panos?
Yeah, the, let's see, the, the high number, let's do the high negative numbers we didn't hear. We had special ed transportation, special ed tuition, right? These, again, are way above what the originally...
Yes, they are.
Seems to be, this seems to be a perennial problem. So, you know...
So this was discussed during the budget prep for this school year. I notified all board members every meeting regarding our deficit.
I'm talking about year, year in and year out with this, these items. You know, we, we don't seem to have a budget enough for it. Or, or there's some unusual thing going on, making them go up very rapidly. So I, I just bring that out again, it's a...
So I've said a few times that we have the same number of students that are outplaced, so we're not adding more kids. Unfortunately, the outplacements are adding a whole lot more money to our bills. So that's something that at, at a state legislator needs to really take hold of and figure out how to...
Right.
Help districts.
A, yeah, we, yeah, we, our big saving was in certified salaries because we, like you said, last day, we were out. We didn't have any. We had positions missed, right? We were not filling or we couldn't fill.
Yeah, we had a handful of positions last year that we were, weren't able to fill. But that's also due to hiring lower than if someone, you know, resigns at that 90,000, 100,000 or retires and we hire at 60, that's that savings. We, we don't always come in at that 300,000 that we budget.
Right.
Hopefully, we always come in more.
Yep, that, what that brings in, we have physical plant services, I think, is what, what is, what is the, this is a 35% deficit. What, is this gas? You were asking the question about gas and Ms. Kanter pointed out that there was, you remember it's something about the price of gas. Is that in, is that in here? Is this causing a negative?
Yep, absolutely. So as of January 1st, 2023, the natural gas contract went into effect and I brought this up to the board, I believe, last May or possibly April. It, it was extreme and it wasn't what was originally told and what we, what, I was under the understanding of what we were locking in with.
Right.
So that is partly, the gas was not budgeted appropriately because of the contract was not adequate. And the other items are, going back to OE, if you look at the reports that are posted, all of those assessments, everything that the maintenance and facilities team did for close to 14 months at Oliver Ellsworth, trying to figure out what the humidity issues are and how to rectify it, that all came from the Board of Ed budget. That was never budgeted. That came from the Board of Ed budget, trying to figure out how to get the school at a good humidity level.
Okay. Could, could you, I see we have this, I should know this, I guess, the Treehouse subsidy. Why don't we budget for that?
So up until COVID hit, Treehouse was always self-funded. It, it should be self-funded. It's supposed to be a self-funded operation. After COVID hit, we have a, a big decrease in numbers of students that come to the program. And we also have a hard time finding staff for that program. So the Board of Ed has picked up the deficit because we can't close the books with a deficit per auditing standard. So we, more or less, we help them out by giving them the difference in what that deficit is. You may remember, I talked about this during budget last year because I don't foresee this getting better because now we're on year three of having to subsidize Treehouse. So we either, as a board, have to make it a priority to fund it and be in our general fund budget, or we have to think of possibly not housing Treehouse anymore or having that kind of program.
Roughly what percent is $117,000 of their, of their total costs? You don't have to give it now, that's all.
I want to, it's like 10%.
10% maybe?
Yeah, it's about 10%.
Okay. Yeah, the magnet schools tuition, I guess that was another big one, big item.
Yep, we have less kids, but they're charging more money.
Yep.
We have less kids, but, excuse me?
The magnet schools have charged more money.
So we missed on the, on the charges, huh?
No, we budget based on what we're told, you know, seven, eight months beforehand.
Right, oh, I see, yeah. So, and they, and they raised the, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Lockard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Panos. So the gas. I'm sure you've been in communication with the town in far as the contract with the gas. Where do we stand with that right now?
So as of a few days ago, we terminated the contract. I hired a firm to represent the town and the Board of Ed and they went through the fine print of the contract that was signed and we are able to terminate after one year. So that year hits December 31st, 2023. So we gave the 60 days, everything's in writing, we're done with that contract. So as of 1/1/24, we don't have a contract. But through all of the research that we did, the majority of school districts actually do not have a lock-in price for natural, I shouldn't say school, school districts and towns do not have a lock-in price right now. So we are going to watch the market and, you know, kind of take it month by month. Anything is better than what we had.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say it again, I always, every year, it's the physical plant. We, we taking yet another deficit in this line item and we keep short-changing ourselves in this line item and this is not a standard break and fix line item budget. When major stuff goes wrong, and for example, what we got going on IE and possibly other schools. OE, yeah, I'm, I'm losing it. This is not good. This is, this is close to quarter million, um, three-quarters of a million dollars that was taken away from the kids just for actually running the physical plant. Just actually having the school open.
just actually having the school open. When this could have been going to other stuff, this could have been going to staff, this could have been going to program, this could have been going to anything else. It could have gone to the overrun for special education. I mean, just, we could have probably finished better than what we did. So, I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I don't see inflation going away anytime soon. It's just going to get worse this winter. So, you know, it is what it is, and you just have to deal with it as it comes. Duck, you know, throw the punches back if you can and duck. Can you do? Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Clace?
I would like to just suggest that we formally address this issue. So, I'm going to give you an example. I was at the town council meeting last night, and the relationship that the Board of Ed has with the town council and the town manager and the Superintendent of Schools is that they are our landlord and we're the tenant. And so, if I were a tenant and my heating costs went up because of a contract that the landlord signed, I think that we would have to bring that to their attention and formally advise them. And if I had to hire the attorney to represent us, to get out of the contract that they had signed, I don't know that I would incur those costs. So, I think it's really important that this Board pay attention, that we, as a Board, pay attention to issues like that that might affect our budget later when everybody, and we did not bring attention to those in a very formal way. So, I would highly suggest that we have clear communication with the town manager and the town council to indicate that this is a problem and that we are incurring the cost for the attorney fees to break the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, first time? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I don't know if this falls under there. It's for the Oliver Ellsworth, the testing of the mold. Is that what that is? Well, I mean, this has been an ongoing problem for 13 years, and I think, like, Ms. Clace, I know, but like Ms. Clace had said, we need to work closer with town council and the town manager on this. This has been a known problem, and it should have been resolved a long time ago. And I just feel that we need to push back really hard on this, and they need to make a diagnosis of what the problem is. I know they keep putting down chemicals to clean. It's not solving the problem. They need to make a, figure it out. What is wrong with it and fix it?
I agree. So, as, you know, my position in the district and my staff, Chuck Waterfield, you know, we're two people.
Sure.
It would be great if the Board could help. They never have.
You can reach.
I never was asked, you know, we never, we, I just want to back up a second, though, because the OE has had humidity issues and moisture for many, many years. It never became to the extent that it is until two years ago.
Because of the high rain and humidity.
Right, and so that's where, like, people, we were always monitoring it. We had the HVAC upgrade, the OE HVAC upgrade. That was a CIP project. Things were removed from that project based on cost. No one wants to talk about that, and that's where we are today. So, it would be great if I had support from a committee of the Board and town council. Like, we gotta get together so everyone is seeing it, and we're not always, it's like, we're the squeaky wheel that's like, come on, come on, come on. Like, that's how it feels as the, trying to like get stuff sometimes, and I get it. I'm not, I don't handle the town, and it's a lot of money, but.
To be an advocate on this because I want to see the problem corrected. I don't want to have to go back and forth like this. I don't want kids in there sick. I don't want stu-, you know, the teachers, the staff in there sick. And we don't want the expense. We don't want to bring the harm to them, and we don't want this chronic expense of not being diagnosed properly. We want it fixed and properly maintained. I think that's the other portion, but I'd be happy to work with anybody that would want to do that and work with town council and the actual town employees and the mayor and the town manager. Thank you.
And just a note, we do have a couple town council members here in the audience, and I appreciate them coming to our meeting as we have, a number of us came to their meeting, and so I think.
We have two?
Two here, yes.
Ushet and Kenny.
Miss Black Burke and Mr. Smith.
Oh.
She's over here.
Oh.
On the left.
Where is he? Oh, okay. I want to see, oh, there you are. I seen your white hair.
Ms. Clace?
I think last night at the council meeting, there was sentiment that we have that joint, we reconvene that joint committee between the council and the Board of Education. So, I think we, maybe we should reach out and do that. I think it might also be important for us, as a Board, to have a standing agenda item on the capital improvement projects that affect the Board of Education. At the town council meeting last night, I think I found out that there are actually at least six school projects in flight right now. And so, my concern is that the staff and the Board of Education staff are working through these projects, and we may not have the oversight that, or the kind of discussion that might need to be had with the town around what's happening with each of those. And we're just kind of going along and assuming everything's okay, and then we find out it's not. So, to me, that might be something we should consider having as a regular agenda item. So, we do not find ourselves in a place like with OE, and, you know, we're not working singularly and perhaps at odds.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Panos?
Yeah, I went to the town council and spoke a little bit because with the same topic here, our vendors have not really given, our consultants have really not given the reason. It's one thing to say that the shiller is oversized, and it's another thing to say we gather data, for example. I mean, it's what I do for a living. I mean, what I would be doing is taking certain measurements of things, you know, if, you know, minute-by-minute data on the changes in temperature and, you know, the chilled water, you know, because they're claiming it's oversized. Well, what do you specifically mean? In other words, what is it causing that's causing the problem? Chilled water, you know, the chilled water system has a lot of flexibility to turn down, and that's why it's very advantageous. You can, I don't want to explain it here, but it's kind of hard for me to understand why they have it. But I can see that they did not take, they didn't take the data that you would normally take, which would be variation in the air temperature leaving the units, variation in the chilled water temperature, you know, minute-by-minute, taking analysis and saying, okay, and then taking the relative humidity readings directly out of the classroom units as this is going on. This is the kind of data that you set up and take it when you're doing a study, you know, and this is testing, and there are many other details to this, to look at it. And then drawing a conclusion, you know, like I said, I think I've commented to you that I believe that the problem lies with the design of the, of the arrangement of the classroom units. And I can imagine how it's done. I won't go into that, but, you know, it's possible. So, it's just, you know, before they go, because they mentioned that, you know, the Public Building Commission is just going full ahead with, you know, the project of having a dedicated outside air system, you know, which is going to be a heat pump type arrangement. That's what they were talking about. I don't know if that's, you know, I don't know the specifics, but they're going out for three quotes for this. It's a $2 million item. But, you know, what are you going to do? You know, I would have a whole bunch of questions on this, and I think that, you know, I think we can, I think we should ask some of these questions and, you know, maybe get somebody who is, you know, a real engineer on this stuff, you know, on, you know, this kind of system or refrigeration engineering and design to find out what the origin of the problem is. Why is it, why is it that it certainly has enough capability to dehumidify? That's the problem. Why isn't it? To me, it's the design of the unit, but anyway. And we may have this problem if we have similar units that we're putting in at Sage Park, right? For all I know, so, anyway.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yeah, sorry. I was just wondering, I know it is, all the conversation is related to the fiscal year conversation. I was just wondering if, for the sake of time, we could possibly like save some of that for when we get to 8F? Just because, you know, we're going to have to get into this.
We're just, I think those people have had, okay, I'll take. Ms. Galinski?
Okay, I actually have a question on the topic at hand. Quick question about the transportation costs. So, we're favorable. Do we expect any, like, do we have any outstanding invoices there? And if not, what is causing the favorability? Because I like that, but I just, I want to know a little bit more.
The variability for the regular ed transportation part?
I mean, just in general, if you combine them together, we're like half a million dollars favorable.
Yep, so, on the regular ed transportation, because of lack of drivers, we did not actually utilize close to four to six buses throughout the whole year. So, times, you know, 500 a day, times 181 days.
Okay.
We'll give you that.
Yeah.
But luckily, because our special ed numbers are so high.
Oh, absolutely.
Anyone else on this? And we will be discussing, Dr. Hill will be presenting on mold, and we'll have OE mold, another round of OE mold, unrelated to the presentation on what we're giving back to the town.
Could we take a break for a minute, just so we can run to the ladies' room?
I think we're, we got a motion on the floor, though, so let's. Motion by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries 900. Is there a motion for five minutes?
Five minutes?
No.
Two? No.
Keep going?
Okay. Keep on going.
I didn't know how many other people may have the same issue. 8D, okay. We're on item 8D. Presentation of the Accountability Report. The only thing is, at 10:30, we'll need a motion to extend. So, do we, if the presentation is, at least before we start asking questions, 25 minutes, then we can make the motion after. So, Dr. Haiti, about how long do you think? We don't need to rush it because we can make a motion to extend now.
There is a problem.
Do you want to move on mold?
Is that?
Mr. Panos, are you favorable moving up the mold discussion now?
Do the mold discussion now.
Oh, sure, sure.
I move, Mr. President. I move.
Excuse me, is there a conversation going on?
I move that we adjust the agenda to deal with item 8F. Place it between 8C and 8D. I mean, yes, place it between 8C and 8D, and then proceed with the rest of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos, to move 8F up to the next discussion point. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention, motion carries 800. So, Ms. Bachelder or Dr. Hill?
So, Ms. Bachelder is going to give an overview, but I just will say to the public, so we've continued our efforts to address the issue at OE, the biggest being the addition of 36, what is it, 36 dehumidifiers in the various classrooms. I'm aware that two more have come in today. We have eight commercial dehumidifiers in the building, and my communications coordinator, Ms. Gill, has been keeping the OE community updated, as well as the creation of a folder on the website, along with a fact sheet with the common questions. Today, we had a representative, Mr. Jim Vinoy, from the Connecticut Department of Health, actually do a Zoom meeting with the staff to share, you know, some background on mold, how it grows, and the best ways of addressing mold issues, which is removing moisture from the situation. So, we'll, and we know that the town has voted to, the town council, rather, has voted to fast-track its processes for garnering a plan for how we're going to develop. And I'm not deep into that. I know Mr. Panos understands way better than me, but they fast-tracked what they need to do in order for engineers to come up with what they need to move forward. But at this time, I am happy to say, according to our facilities, this past Friday, the humidity level in the building, which is usually more around 60 and above, was in the low 40s, which is great because the drier it is, or the less humidity, the less likelihood of mold actively growing. And even on the rainy day we just had, Mr. Waterfield went to the school, and it was still below 50. And so, that was great. The dehumidifiers are doing what they need to do. And so, we're going to keep proceeding with our mitigation efforts. Ms. Bachelder?
Okay, so, just to piggy off, piggyback off what Dr. Hill stated. So, with the contracted company called Blue Sky of Hartford, that is the remediation vendor that we are using. So, I just want to let you know what that scope of work was, so you know. So, they sprayed all affected walls, cabinet faces, any areas above the cabinets with a plant-based antimicrobial and wet wipe clean. They did that from the walls and up four feet high. They also, technicians will remove all vent covers, wipe down, clean up, will now start the next phase tomorrow and Thursday and Friday, if need be, by cleaning all bookshelves in all classrooms, all cubbies, things, you know, that are all tucked away. They'll remove all the books from the shelves, inspect the covers. If growth is found, they will put in a baggie, secure it so the staff teacher knows that it does have to be disposed of. They will also do the same in the library. They will remove all the books off the shelves, inspect all the covers. Again, if growth of mold is found, they will again just baggie it and keep it so they, our staff knows what they need to dispose of and what they need to purchase. We also sent out the recommendation of the survey, excuse me. So, it wasn't an actual formal letter from OE. The teachers' union president in that building, steward, excuse me, in that building, sent out a survey to all of the teachers. They responded with the kind of material or supplies that were destroyed, what they needed, and are filling out an expense sheet. Literally, as we talk, we put the deadline for tomorrow for that sheet so we can reimburse all of our staff at OE. Moving forward, I, you know, let Principal Gruber know because we are ahead of it now instead of behind it. Anything, again, that's why they're baggying things, so we know exactly what we need to replace, so we're not having staff have to spend their own money and then wait for that reimbursement. We don't like to reimburse. It's not really great to have to do that. We're going to purchase it from the start now, moving forward. So, staff don't have to worry about that. Your eyes look like you're confused, Mr. Panos.
You're going to buy what they buy things, don't they buy things that they prefer? Then you really can't predict what that is, or tell me?
We, no. So, teachers get, teachers fill out a list of what they want for supplies every year. They give it to the administrators in each building, and that's what's ordered. So, now that we're ahead of it, now we know they're coming tomorrow. We know they're coming Thursday and possibly Friday. Anything that needs to be destroyed, we will now know. So, the district will now buy it instead of having the teacher buy it and then reimburse.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Bachelder?
Mr. Lockhart? All right, I want to take us on a little journey. I think I've been around the longest on this particular piece. I think Mr. Panos took a break and came back. But I'm hearing a lot of things about the Board of Education not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And the whole finger-pointing thing, have no interest in that. But what I want to do is put the facts out there because this Board of Education and the Court of Public Opinion. is being told, and the superintendent is being told, we're not doing our job as a collective board, and that superintendent, through his staff, is not doing our job. This is something that's been going on for well over a decade, well over a decade. So, when we started really getting into the thrust of this, the CIP to replace that unit on that building was crafted in 2015. It went to design in 2016. It then went, the unit, the, the unit then went into construction in 2017. But, um, November of 2016, it was reported in the, um, the JI that the Director of Public Works, um, Bob Jarvis, stated that the testing of the boilers, um, has detected deterioration and leakage. The system piping, which is used for both heating and air conditioning, is also in need of replacement. The unit ventilators and fan coils in each classroom need replacement with a new energy-efficient unit. The design would be for high-efficiency, low-condensing heating boilers with variable-speed distribution pumps, a high-efficiency chiller with a new cooling tower, and a variable-speed fan, new efficient unit ventilators, heat units, fan core units, and a system supply and return piping, and et cetera. We then fast-forward to, um, April of 2017, and there was an email communication, um, between, um, at the time, Whit fresh, um, informing that all the bid quotes and deductions that the town had removed from the CIP project due to cost. And the original bid was two point two million dollars. And for the record, two million, two hundred and twenty thousand and five hundred dollars. There was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars deducted from that project from the town. So, with the deducts, it came to one million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. But here's some of the things that were deducted. Chiller vent piping, rigging electric, the cooling tower for piping for the pumps, with electrical and rigging, the mezzanine air handling unit, piping fans, electric rigging, duct cleaning, deletion of a third boiler, boiler exhaust to PVC, and the air-water balancing. All those things came to two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So, a lot of this, a lot of this stuff was taken out, and a lot of the stuff that was in place was retrofitted to make it work the way it is today. Just want to make sure that, and I want to document that Ms. Bachelder pushed back hard on this in an email, stating that these were cuts that, that the district vehemently, um, fought against, and they were still cut by the town. Dr. Cook gave a follow-up on July of 2017, um, in regards to the air handling. He gave another update to the Board of Ed on August of 2017, um, letting us know that the subsequent projects were continuing to progress, with one exception. His biggest concern at the time was the OE Havik system, the uni, the unit ventilators for the job that were being shipped from Illinois on that particular Friday. He expected them in Windsor at a certain time, but he was still concerned that there was considerable work to be done, and the company assures that they were on track. Again, all that information was shared too with the town. I'm laying a story and, and developing a pattern here. The CIP meetings through 2017, 2018, um, want to note that the town, um, did not add Phase Two to the CIP for twen, for seventeen to twenty-two, or for eighteen to twenty-three. It was stated, um, in email communications between Mr. Greco, Mr. Fresh, and Ms. Bachelder, to that they started to work together to include the OE chiller as part of the LED lighting upgrade the town was applying for, to, for the state. So, they were trying to catch up. Um, there was at a point where the rebate program offered through the state of Connecticut and town of Windsor, they applied for the program. On March of 2018, Dr. Cook, who was the superintendent at the time, also stated that the town was also moving forward with a proposal for the LED lighting for the elementary schools, and that the OE cool-in project portion of the HVAC project, project was on, on task. The project would be finalized, was to be finalized at the next council meeting, and then, when it was presented to the council, it passed with a nine-zero vote. Move forth to 2018, and I just want to pull up my receipts. On March nineteenth, there was a communication from the mayor of the town of Windsor, presented, it was presented to the mayor and the town council on March nineteenth, 2018, and it was about the Oliver Ellsworth project. And it went into a background, a discussion, analysis, the financial impact, and any board action that was required by us, and that the recommendations was, if the town was in agreement, that the motions, um, to address the situation was as follows. To waive the reading, and that it be resolved that the reading into the minutes that the text of the bond ordinance titled "An Ordinance Appropriating Three Hundred and Twenty Thousand Dollars" for the cost in connection of Oliver Ellsworth School and the HVAC Improvement Project, Phase Two, and authorizing the issue of three hundred and twenty thousand in bonds and notes to finance the appropriation. It's hereby waived, and the full text of the ordinance have been distributed to each member of the council, and copies be made available to persons attending this meeting. That was approved. And then, it was moved that the bond ordinance, um, and then went through more performer about the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in bonds. Again, the town knew, based off of these, these motions, that the system was in trouble, and, and more work needed to be done. Moving forth, there was a town council meeting on September seventeenth, 2018. And within that meeting, um, one of the act, one of the items was, um, the Oliver Ellsworth School HVAC system. The contractor has installed three new air handling units in, in, in the cooling tower. The contractor, S Key Mechanical, had notified the PBC that there were unexpected issues with these installations. During the demolition, during the demolition of the three air handling units, the hydronic piping installation was removed, and extensive corrosion to the piping was uncovered. The corroded piping had been removed back to where they branch off to the main piping. During the rewiring of the new cooling tower, it was discovered that one of the two under-grade electrical conduits had, was broken and unstable. It's also stated that the PBC understands that there's a sub, substantial funding request for this project before the town council on that evening of nine seventeen, 2018, and that the PBC reviewed the change orders to correct these issues with them. The town council approved the funding that evening. So, if we move forth, during twenty, during September, there, there was, um, Eagle Environment was hired to perform a mold assessment. Sum of 2021, BOE contracted Carrier Commercial Services to check the chiller sizing, to determine issues with the unit. They were shutting down too often, possibly not dehumidifying the property, and water temperature being too cold. Sum of 2021, the BOE also contracted United Control Solutions to try to make the adjustments to the, to the existing BMS controls for better comfort. September of 2021, Eagle Environment then came in to provide a, a visual assessment. So, August of 2022, September of 2022, there was, um, to perform mold and moisture assessments and to provide visual inspections. On, on September of 2022, we contracted True Flow LLC to do the testing and balancing, to make sure that everything in the water flow was going through the pipes correctly, the HVAC piping. On October nineteenth, 2022, um, the OE, um, Dr. Hill informed the full Board of Education of Con Osh's request. That's because there was a complaint made about the, the situation within the building. And then, then we contacted pe, the people on November of 2022. And they, they did more testing. And in summary, there was no valuable mold spores in the air samples indicating that the sample areas were not displaying elevated, um, spore concentrations. But we also know that testing took place in November of 2022. So, we're in the fall season. So, the relative humidity in that outside was lower, and plus, there's negative pressure in that building, so there was not as much air, and when the air was coming through, as, with negative pressure, but there wasn't that much humidity outside. So, therefore, the mold situation was not as bad as if it was very humid outside. There's been numerous visual inspections. Um, we, we've been responding all through September to Oct, um, November about all the concerns that was made by staff. We made, you know, the superintendent's office is working closely with the staff. The Windsor Public Schools is continuing to spend money with True Flow and with Eagle Environment to perform mold and, 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 um, mold and moisture assessments, um, with airflow distribution and balancing, because it was, it was, it was chilling the air, but it was condensing so fast that the condensation was in the building. There was no, it was poor exhaust coming out of the building, other than the exhaust vents in the bathrooms. So, therefore, there wasn't a proper airflow to pull the moisture out. So, I'm of the belief that it was a poor design, because it should have had the proper airflow to pull that moisture out. On one side of the building, it has air handling units, which is the main office, the gym, the cafeteria, that's all air handling. But on the classroom side, all those dampers were shut down. So, there's no airflow coming out of those rooms and those dampers. So, there's no exhaust coming out of those rooms. So, the relative humidity is building up in the rooms, and then, there's no way to exhaust it out unless you leave the doors open. So, that's where the heavy mold has been very persistent in the building, has been that side of the building. That's a design flaw that we had no, no, no knowledge about. And then, the August of this year, um, the unit vents and, and blowers were assemblies were taken apart and disinfected. And this cleaner has been going on throughout. And then, we, we contracted Blue Sky, and the star done a lot of remediation. My point is this. This has been a well-known issue. This has been an issue that's been well-documented by, um, by our facilities. We've been working, the documentation, the emails show that we've been communicating with the, with the landlords as the tenants. So, for the, the narrative that, that the town didn't know that this was an issue going on, it's very disappointing. But this is not to point the finger, this is to set the record straight, that we've been spending money, we just demonstrated that we're spending money out of our budget to take care of a situation. And I dare ask if, did we sign off on the permits on these jobs? Are there still open permits on these jobs? Are there still any punch lists on these jobs? And if there's still punch lists on these jobs, and if there's still open permits on these jobs, where the building official or the fire marshal have not signed off on, I'm not understanding if we truly paid off, if the contract has been fully paid off for a job completed, then something went wrong, but it wasn't us that cut the check. It's the town that cut the check. So, my point is, we have a sick building. Let's be very clear. As a Board of Ed member, I've been serving office hours in that building, and Mr. Panos has been in that building as well, as long as I have, and just going through the building, looking at it. And, you know, me and Mr. Panos, politically, we don't agree on a lot of things. But I strongly believe that on this matter, we, we agree on a lot of different, we agree on things. At the end of the day, if there are open permits, if there are inspections that need to be done, whether it's work that they, the town, through their facilities had to do, is still open, that's wrong. If we had to do Band-Aids on their work, and their stuff is still open, that's wrong as well. At the end of the day, this is a sick building. It was a poorly designed solution. They've used, they, they, they're nickel-and-dimed it, that they're using infrastructure that was put with the original building to make stuff work. The fact that we have not cleaned any of these ducts, I dare not go into the walls, I dare not go into the ceilings, because it's probably damp up there, you probably got poorly insulated pipes, you probably got poor, poor workmanship, and, and, and I'm speaking for me. So, just in case someone wants to sue me for slander, I'm speaking for me. If, I, I, I'm willing to bet my house that there's probably poorly insulated pipes up there from this insulation. There's, there's no way that these ceilings could be sweating, unless there was poor workmanship, there was piping, there's condensation going up in there, and there's pooling of moisture up there, and it's creating a very moist environment. So, at the end of the day, as a Board of Ed member that's been here probably consistently the longest on this, yeah, I take ownership of the fact that I didn't push as a professional. But you know what? I'm of the opinion that I was trusting, but not verifying. Shame on me, I'll own that. I'm not trusting until I verify. Because at the end of the day, I'm praying that there are no open permits, that there are no open punch lists, and a chiller that's been sitting on that building since 2018. If that's truly the case, that's a disservice to this town, and we need to do better. I need to do better. I can only speak for me, but we need to do better. That is a sick building. Those janitors have been working their tails off, night and day, scrubbing that building. That principal, Mr. Gruber, has worked his, his, his tail off to make sure that the morale in his building remains high. We got par.
Point of order. The, uh, clapping, I'm sorry. Yep, all right.
I, I can't proceed till he tells me.
No.
No, I don't, I think he was. No, he, he made a point of order, so I stop until you address it.
That's right, I'm, I'm, this is not an entertainment here, we're, we're having a, a meeting, please.
So, so, at, at the, at the end of the day, I truly believe that this Board of, this Board of Ed is doing what we're supposed to be doing. I'm going to continue to work with the town. We had a conversation with the leadership on the town council on a Saturday, and we committed to getting this work done. We're gonna get this work done. But what I can't tolerate, if I'm wrong, I will accept the fact when I'm wrong. And I was wrong because I was a tenant that trusted my landlord and didn't follow through. I own that, I own that. But what I can't own is that the finger is pointed directly at me all the time. When I mean me, the Board of Education, the superintendent, the, our town facilities person. We, I, I just can't go for that, and I'd have to set the record straight tonight. So, if anybody wants to speak to me offline about this, I gave you a very overview of everything that's been going on since 2015, when this unit was designed to today. We got a lot of work to do. Mr. Panos, I want to publicly thank you. You and I have been in that building, looking at different things, jostling off each other, and we both understand that we got some work to do. And Mr. Smith, um, Councilor Smith also has been in that building as well. So, I encourage any board member or any town council, if you want to take a walk through there. I, I'm doing office hours in there every Thursday and Friday. I'm working in that building for my professional job in that building until the end of, of the academic year. And I am in the hot zone where the classrooms are. All right? I'm, do we need to, um?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
You, you want to a half hour?
May need more.
Move, move to extend.
So, what do you want to do?
To extend.
Extend, one half hour, yeah.
Extend it, yeah.
It's a total one half hour? I move, Mr. President, I move that we, I move that we extend the meeting to eleven o'clock.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? A motion's been made to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Abstentions? Motion carries eight, one.
So, 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 with that, with that being said, I will stop right there for the sake of time, because I can go on for another hour with this. But I just want to make sure that we set the record straight, that Dr. Hill was not the superintendent at the time, when a lot of this stuff was going on. He just happened to be the man that's holding the baton in the race. And for, for him to take the beating that he's been taking over this, it's totally inappropriate, as a board, we've been silent about it. So, I only speak for me, and make sure that we understand that we need to support him, we need to guide him, we need to instruct him on what the board needs to have done, and work closely with the town council and the town manager, and make sure we get it done.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, on the OE mold issue?
Yeah, you can ask.
No.
Ms. Taylor?
No, not on mold.
Does our student want to leave? Does our student want to leave?
We asked him.
It's been really tight tomorrow.
You didn't bring your sleeping bag or anything? Thanks so much. It's a good time.
I would like to make a motion.
Yeah, he, he. You want to table it?
Yes.
Okay.
Did they make the motion?
We going on, yeah, get going here.
Is there a motion?
What?
To, to.
So, he.
To do what?
To, to table the accountability report.
Oh, that's, that's a good idea, yeah.
Mr. President?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lockhart?
I move that we postpone the accountability report. I moved that we postpone the accountability report until the, the October meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries nine, zero, zero. Anybody still on the OE mold last, last call?
No, 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 we've done enough for today. Go ahead.
Um, I would just like to see our executive committee perhaps look at the solution that's been proposed by the town for the OE mold to ensure that we think that's the best option to go forward. Um, I don't know too much about it, but I just think that that might be a good group to kind of take a look at it. It's, you know, a bipartisan group, could work with the town, you know, just, and support, um, the superintendent's office to get, make sure we're doing the right assessment for mitigation.
Yeah.
Long-term mitigation.
Right, right.
I don't want to discuss it anymore. I just, I just think that might be something you want to consider.
Yep.
Okay. Till October. Update on transportation? We're now, I believe, at 8:00 E. Update on transportation?
Oh, gosh.
Ms., Ms. Batchelder?
Why do I always feel the bear of bad news?
Get in the hot seat.
Every meeting. Alright. The state of transportation. Alright, so, um... Sorry, I have all these tabs open, give me one sec, okay. Um, as of today, we currently have thirty-seven route drivers. We have three currently on leave of absence. One driver is due back September thirtieth, another's mid-October, and one is still undetermined. We are borrowing six drivers right now from different yards, and there are currently seven drivers in training and interviewing every day. Notification of late buses has been a, a big issue. Um, I don't, I, I know some of you know about it, but I think everything else going on with the, in the district right now with OE, it's, hasn't been, um, on, and as much radar as usually is, but it's an issue. So Daco has now implemented, we'll send an email to all schools that are affected by late runs in the morning, um, as soon as they're, as soon as possible. They are sending them at 5:30 a.m., 7:00 a.m., and then what happens is, once those routes start, I know I'm not, I'm talking, you've heard this a thousand times from me. Um, that's when, once those routes start, and then it affects the elementaries, we're getting the emails from Daco. They're going to the elementary schools at, say, 8:00. And if the admin assistant doesn't see that email, they're, they're not getting those calls out. So that is a big issue, it's a big breakdown area. Um, this message is also going to be sent when buses are combined, because we've been having to combine buses. Or if a sub-driver is driving the bus, because it very well, we're not going to say it will be late, but it very well could be, so we're going to inform the schools that is a sub-driver, so to make sure their families know that. And then the drivers are going to notify dispatch if they are outside the ten-minute window. And the dispatch will reach out to those routes affected personally and update the time if necessary.
Questions? Ms. Cantor, then Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, President Fury. Um, I did send you an email, I got an email, Mr. Gagne got it too, regarding the students, um, for the Loomis, and they were marked tardy for the I-Ready test for going to school. And it was a group of students, and they didn't get to eat breakfast, and there was really no notification done, timely notification. And it's making a big hardship on the parents, you know, for work, and it's stressing out the kids.
Yep.
Um, so, and if anything, and I know it's not you, if Daco has to call on time, and they're not, you spread the email, right, about what time the pickup was, and they got no notification?
Yeah.
So, Daco really needs to start notifying us timely. They know if they don't have a 7:00 driver, these are elementary schools. So they start much later, so they know what they've got.
So just so the board knows, we have, so what also compounded this is the issue that they actually wanted to do last October, if you remember, is flip to this new system. They now have this new system, they're off of MapNet, and they're on Transversa. And it's just been, it's been horrendous. I, 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 I am with you, if there is something I could do.
And my husband never got through the email for that. He, he went through everything, he never got it. He's very, he works, I told you, with the military. He, he doesn't miss, you know, if it's anything, I read everything. I'm, I will miss more than him, and I usually don't miss. He just didn't get it. So I don't know if it was sent out and it just didn't go. You know how sometimes the server, servers are down and stuff? You know, they have to ping the servers and-
Now, there, we had issues with this whole system. They changed the link, they didn't tell us, so we had a bad link on our website. I mean, it's been one thing after another. I'm not here to sugarcoat anything with Daco. I wish we could change tomorrow. And trust me, I won't be back to you asking for a contract renewal this time.
Um, when does our contract expire with them?
2026, can't come soon enough.
Have we thought about possibly, and this is another expense, getting vans if they, they can't supply the drivers and-
So that's one of the reasons, going back to special ed transportation, one of the reasons why our special ed transportation is so high is because we're contracting with all these, um, different companies, because Daco can't handle it. And it, it's not, and, and we, we gotta get our special ed kids, I mean-
Two, right, you have to give them a choice.
So we're just saying, forget it, and we're transporting them with other companies. So we're not even on a contract, like, you know, per, per, for price-wise with some of these companies.
I don't know what the solution is.
I'm as frustrated as you guys.
Own your own, own your own transportation, and that's a huge liability.
Yeah, and it's a huge cost. It's, it's a lot more than what we have currently budgeted.
I guess we could probably look and see what else is, you know, we already looked at other services, but it's something to keep in mind. You know, you see these other companies going on strike too, and the dollar-
Right, MJ, MJR, yeah, and, yeah, first, yeah.
So it's 2026, is that like the beginning of the year, or is it like-
July first.
Go well, thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
So, um, it's, for me, it's not necessarily, you know, me getting emails. This is happening to my child. And the fact that his entire bus had to be dropped off today, got home, went all day, I still didn't get any call at all. That's unacceptable. That's a special education van. And when you do that, when no bus ever comes, and then you have to drop your child off to school, to Ms. Cantor's, uh, uh, point, they miss breakfast, they miss their SEL moment, they miss the regiment that they need to make sure that they're okay throughout the entire day. The entire bus did not come. Ms. Jorgensen had to reach out to Daco, and they apologized that there was no driver. So you knew there was no driver and you never told central office? Further, I'm a little annoyed, because that note should have came from your office, Ms. Batchelder, not Leanna Jorgensen. I should have been told. I, my email was not responded to, besides it's being looked into. That's inappropriate, unacceptable, and I'm a little, well, I'm not a little, I'm a, a lot disappointed that it's, it's on your office, though. If Daco doesn't do what they're supposed to do, your liaison needs to make sure that parents are notified. The fact that I'd put my child in the car and taken to school several times in the last two weeks, and then today is when I just lost it and had to inform my caucus I'm about to lose it, is that I was just informed that the bus was never coming. So I'm sitting there with a child on the autism spectrum, waiting for his bus for forty-five minutes to an hour. It's unacceptable, we're paying them too much dag on money, and I don't care if everybody need to go and get into their van or to their car, come get my kid. I have the flexibility and my schedule to wait at a, at the door with my child. What about the parent that has to get to work? Like, that's insane to me. It's ridiculous. So I put him in the car, I bring him to school, but at this point, now everyone's staring at him coming into class late. He's struggling, I'm sure, he's struggling to get his Chromebook together, get his stuff into the, and then I get, you know, I get out of the office to talk, I'm talking to Ms. Jorgensen, and then I'm seeing the rest of the parents come. The kids waiting for their paras to come get them from the front office. It's really beyond my scope of understanding, and I usually rock with the district. I cannot rock with this anymore. I can't be quiet about it anymore. This is not a parent emailing me, this is me. And so if this is happening to me, like, I, it just feels like I'm not getting the, 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 the bedside manner that I'm going to need to get. Like, I, I'm, I'm, I'm really, like, disappointed in the district on this one. You can, you can say you wish you could get rid of the contract and everything, but this personally affects my kid. And I, I really need to either, if you want to bring them to task and we have them come and do the things that we need to do, fine. But a bus not showing up to a door-to-door by law, it has to be granted. My child should be picked up every single morning and brought to school and brought back every single day. And if it doesn't happen, if it's late, I get it. But the fact that the bus today, Daco said to Leanna Jorgensen, the principal of Sage Park Middle School, it was never coming and they knew the driver wasn't coming, I'm sorry. I need, I need a response, and it can't be, I, I would like to get rid of it too, I'm so sorry. I, I, I can't, I can't, I can't rock with it anymore. It, it, it's just, at this point, it's unprofessional. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, um, when my son was at Ja-, um, Sage Park Middle School, we had the same problems, they weren't calling her. I spoke to her on the phone, and she wasn't getting notified, so someone's dropping the ball, and it's very dangerous. And I feel really badly for any parent that goes through that, especially special needs, because the child is not back on track for days after this. And then it's really stressful on you too. And it's like, is my bus coming tomorrow on time? My son's out there usually waiting before, he'll be out there ten or fifteen minutes. And he doesn't, he's not on a, a spectrum. And he gets irritated when they're not there on the minute. Because he says if he's a kid that has to be ready, then he expects the adult. But someone's dropping the ball on this. I know when we called for my son for the schedule with Daco this year, they, um, no one could answer a question. We can put you into their voicemail. Well, it's like, well, you know, we're already in school, you know, it's, school has begun. You don't have anybody manning the phones? I've called them before, they don't call me back, left voicemails, they don't email me back. I think they're extremely unprofessional.
Who's "they"? Daco?
I'm sorry, Daco.
No, I just-
Daco.
I think they're extremely unprofessional.
And like I said, I, I talked to Mrs.-
I want to call to Daco.
I, I spoke to Mrs. Jorgensen several times, and I know Kelly was in the office, her assistant, she's great. She's in really early, and she gets all the calls and she sends everything out. They just don't get it. So someone's dropping the ball. Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Clay?
Um, is there a, um, way that, would you, um, would it be helpful to have more support for your office? So I'm thinking that maybe there's, um, uh, something, I know you've looked into this legally, and we've had the lawyers look at it, but maybe we need to manage them more directly on a daily basis. I know you have a lot of, I'm not saying you're not doing a good job, but you have a lot of things you're doing. So I just don't know if there's maybe like, you know, a retired business manager, or if there's some vendor, or there's something that we can do to help the office manage that contract, because I can't ima-, it must be taking up all your time. That's all I can imagine, like-
So there's nothing that anyone is going to do that we're not doing. It's, it's on, it's Daco. They're the issue. I mean, we have a transportation coordinator, which most districts don't. They go directly to the transportation company. Um, but I've, and I, I, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm, I'm pulling up the email now, but I, we, I can, I have sat in meetings, myself and Jen, with Daco, and they don't have, like, Jen doesn't have the answer. And that's where- I, I, I agree.
Somebody. The email I got from Leanna Jorgensen was-
You're, you're not a, you're not a-
The email I got from Ms. Jorgensen was after, I, I don't even know what the time was. I don't know, you guys will have to go back and check what I sent to you. The fact that, right now, I have not received anything from your office is pissing me off. That's a problem to me. Besides, we're looking into it. The, the response I got, the update that I got from Ms. Jorgensen today at 5:33 p.m., my baby wasn't picked up today. Somebody needs to pick up the phone, and everybody on Bus 105 needed a call, so that we've trust that when we put our babies on that bus. I got a call last week from a, a robocall saying, he's not at school. His dad calls me, where's Steven? I put him on the bus. Guess why? Because he's marked late. He's marked late. That's not on Daco, that's on us. If he's marked, if he's in the building, why isn't anybody turning around and making sure you're not putting kids, parents into a tailspin that their child is not in the building? I got this robocall after 9:00 a.m. I'm sitting in a meeting, and it's saying, Steven Junior is not in the building. That's crazy to me. That's crazy to me. And I chilled on it, sent a, an email, but I didn't want to make a big deal out of it. But today, him never being picked up, and I'm checking my board email right now, and I never got anything from your office, is a problem. Am I wrong?
No. You're 100% right. And any parent would be out of their minds.
Everybody on Bus 105, a parent should have been called, at least with an apology. We gotta own this one. We gotta own this one. Yes, Daco, but we don't get to say that. We don't get to say it. We don't get to pass the buck on this, folks. We have to own it.
I, I'm, I'm not passing the buck.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yeah, I think the, the general consensus from my, um, colleagues is that it's just communication. Um, I, I spoke, I mean, Ms. Taylor spoke to it at length, and Darlene even mentioned what more it could be possibly provide you with to be able to possibly increase that kind of communication, or just help, like, mitigate that situation, um, so to speak. But I think that's the general idea that we're dealing with here, is just a breakdown in the communication and, and how do we resolve this.
Thank you. Anyone else? One time I didn't recognize you, now I'm trying to recognize you, and you're pointing, Mr. Lock, Mr. Lockhart.
Um, we hear a lot of complaints about the transportation specialists, for whatever reason. I know these buses that we have, they should, I'm, I'm assuming they, I know they got cameras, they should have GPS on them. I'm not sure what the interface is between the transportation specialist and Daco, and do we have at a minimum access to GPS on these units? So a transportation specialist can know at a moment's notice, look on a map of Windsor and see where these buses are. And if they see that a particular bus is not on the road or something, if we didn't get the communication from Daco, which is quite possible, um, that interface is somebody that could be making a call to the parents, making a call to the buildings. I, I'm just not sure what that interface looked like. If you could provide some more clarity on that at the next meeting, or in, in an update, that would be greatly appreciated. Because I believe there's an opportunity there with that transportation specialist. But right now, um, for someone not to get a call, for a bus not to be coming at all, uh, that, that, that's, that's just wrong for any parent in this district, especially for the special ed kids.
Anyone else? Um, Mr. Hallack?
Um, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask if it, if it might be possible to get a representative from a Daco here for our next meeting, um, and kind of, kind of put them on the hot seat at this point.
Mr. Panos, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Sure.
Any disagreement with that? So, you know, that is going to be a request then to, that is going to be a request then to the, to the superintendent's office to see if they can get a representative here.
Well, just the one, I mean, the, the GPS idea is a great one, and it should be a requirement that they have a GPS on these, and identifies, and so that you can find out where, where your bus is and where your child is supposed to be on, and this, at all times. is and where your child is supposed to be on at all times. So I don't know.
Mr. Lockhart?
So, I, from professionally, I got 24 individuals that work for me, and I know where their vehicles are in seven states at a moment's notice. So if a customer calls me with an issue, or I need to redirect and provide a better route to get a customer satisfied within that day, I know exactly where they are, and it's through Element. So if, 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 if I, and I'm not a transportation specialist by any means, but I know how to reach my, my individuals at a moment's notice, we should be able to reach these buses at a moment's notice within, within our town lines.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, President Fury. I believe they have a GPS on there, because last year, well, it was probably in June, or the bus rolled by our driveway and never stopped, and they said they stopped at our address. And my husband and I visually saw the bus never stopped, and they said their GPS shows that the bus stopped. So I believe they do. Daco has it.
I think you have a question, maybe, can we ask them, what else are they able to, or should we be telling them, that if they have this technology, that at least the central office should know where buses are, and whether or not that means you need a dedicated person to look just at that specific thing? I, I think, we know the technology's clearly there. I mean, my daughter, who lives in Boston, knows exactly when a T is coming, a bus is coming, and knows to say, oh, it's late, I'm going to walk, or I'm not going to wait for this, there's another bus or another T coming. The technology's all there. So I, I, I think it would be great to know whether or not Daco's willing to do this, and, and they'll be, we'll be asking them at our next meeting if, if they're here. Anything else? I think the next item is committee reports. I didn't know if there's any plans for Darlene or Nathan or Ms. Taylor. Nothing yet. I know.
Nothing yet.
Nothing, finance. Okay. Okay. Other matters, regular board meetings, announcements. We're going to do announcements after the next Board of Ed meeting is Tuesday, October 17, 7:00 PM. And should we do audience to visitor first? Is it okay if we take out of order?
We got six minutes, so if we have multiple people, we're going to have to extend.
Oh, you want to jump over? Is that the...
You need a motion, or we just, by consensus?
No, well, let's just, you, you can get these, this out of the way real quickly.
Do one out of the way. Announcements?
Can you just say we don't have any?
Well, that's up to everybody. We, we, and some people expressed to me.
No announcements, guys?
I, I have no announcements for the sake of time. Anybody else have an announcement, or do you come wave? Next items, audience to visitor. Ms. Daly, could read the script?
This is Robin Daly. Apologize for that. This is Robin Daly from the superintendent's office. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q&amp;A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar, or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar, and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be prompted with, you are now unmuted. For clear communication, we ask that you do not call, place your call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Before we begin, I move that we extend the meeting to 11:15, for the sake of audience to visitors.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of extending the meeting to 11:15, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Abstentions? Motion carries 900. Before Mr. Slate goes, do we have anybody in the queue?
There are attendees, but currently no hands raised. Um, there is one comment in the Q&amp;A feature with just a first name, no last name or address.
George Slate, George Slate, 74 Ethan Drive. Sorry to focus on you, Dr. Hill, but it has been in the news the last six days, so I'm glad to see that you don't wear sunglasses at these meetings. Anyway, regarding your item 7G, I have other comments, which I'm, I'm sure I'm not going to be able to get to, but I think church groups have ages that cover a wide range. I know the group that we support at the University of Connecticut Asian American Cultural Center has a mentoring program with Killenley High School, so you could have an age range between a freshman in high school and a senior in college, which was a wider range than what you were trying to raise. Sorry. I'm going to call you Darlene. Sorry, because we go way back. In your new role in November, we think, what you raised about heating and other issues, you have a different perspective there or a different role, but your perspective can still be the same. You also have in the audience tonight a member of the Capital Improvement Projects Committee. I'm not sure, from the town council perspective, whether or not that committee should only meet once a year. I made comments to them this year. I don't know if I ever saw any other comments over the years, but I was trying to do it from the role of the discontinued task force on clean energy, and offered some comments on, in that front. But there, and also, I think, at the town council meeting, there was comments about, can you group what you have in your five, a five-year program by school, by location, by building? So that, that's hopefully in the works. In the business world, they have this crazy thing, the last couple of years I was working, root cause analysis. My offering to you is, you should have the Public Building Commission report to you. Come here once or twice a year. One. Two, you should attend, someone from Board of Ed or the school district should attend each and every one of the PBC meetings. The problem with that is, I don't know if you get to allow it to speak, but that should be something that's correctable. Yeah, I've had my own issues with them in terms of reliability. The 10-year plan for the town is coming up in a year or two. You might want to organize some thoughts on what your input's going to be on that front. But finally, the town manager has thrown out in the last couple of meetings, this notion that we're replacing the high school roof that was replaced 25 years ago. We've got old buildings. You've got to make a, you've got to offer some input, collect some thoughts on, are we going to stay with the old buildings? Are we going to get new ones, which are just damn super expensive? But you got to have those discussions, because lots of money, throwing good money after bad is not a good way to proceed. Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board?
I will make this quick. We all want to go home. I would just like to comment on the transportation issue. We all know I have five kids in this district. You hear me say it at every meeting, blah, 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 blah. Four out of my five kids are not taking the bus in the mornings, because there's just, the buses are running ridiculously late. I, my Paquonic daughter, I drive her to school every morning, because if she takes the bus, she gets there at like 9:00. She doesn't get to have breakfast. She doesn't get to do anything. This isn't, this is an untenable situation for any parent in our district. This is not acceptable, and I really think we need to be, some, somebody needs to be looking at this business contract and figuring out what we can do to break it. We have been, like, dealing with this since COVID for a number of years at this point, and it's not getting any better. And I mean, like, thank, you know, thank God Ms. Taylor can be there to get her son on the bus. What about a parent who cannot be there to get their special ed kid on the bus? That kid could have been left there all day. That's a lawsuit waiting to happen, waiting to happen. And I just, like, I don't see how we can continue to work with Daco. They've proven over the last several years that this is not, like, this is, this does not seem to be their forte, and the parents and the students of this district are suffering for it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom would like to address the board?
I will also make this quick. I also have a Paquonic student who, in the app, says she should be picked up at 8:09.
Becky, do you want to give your name?
I'm sorry, Margaret Essex, 95 Lighthouse Hill Road. Yeah, she should be picked up at 8:09. I don't think throughout the entirety of the school year thus far, she has been picked up before 8:40. We were notified, all right, after the first week of school, check over the weekend. The times may change. It has not changed. So if at all possible, break the contract. Yes, that's going to cost some money, but again, just what Becky said, it'll avoid potential lawsuits, right? So, you know, just whatever we can do to keep our students safe, keep them on track with their, their standards of education, getting to school on time, being able to take advantage of the free breakfast, right? Because how many of our students are not able to have breakfast at home? So just please keep all of that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom? Seeing and hearing none, is there anybody else other than the unidentified person?
She has identified herself. Carrie Mendoza, 721 Kennedy Road, asks, I may have missed it, but has it been said what they are using to clean the mold at OE?
I have it. I printed it out.
It was one of the updates, right? It was in one of the updates. Even though we normally don't comment on audience to visitors, I'm told it should be online in the folder, the OE folder.
It's that. It's a mater, it's like MSD, it's a data sheet. If you click on the email and the email update.
Yes.
Sorry.
Any, anybody else? Then we'll look for a motion. Move to adjourn. Second, is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Motion carries 900. At 11:04, we are adjourned.
There you go. That's the way things used to be back 20 years ago. It was all the time.